All right, everybody. Let's open the meeting. Can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the June 5th, 2023 Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBAA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBAA present here this evening. Myself, Chairman Alan Donlin. Vice Chairman Carl Hinger. Our Secretary is Janet Laforja. Regular member Commissioner Lisa Temple. Regular member Commissioner Nahid Kaiser. Alternative Member Commissioner Mr. Larry Rushmeyer. Alternative Member Commissioner Mr. Richard Briggs is supposed to be here shortly. We'll count him absent for now. Alternative Member Commissioner Elijah Hjuling is here this evening. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally, is here this evening. Our new recording secretary Cassandra Varian is with us this evening. Our land use director, Ms. Rachelle Hadza, is with us this evening. Thank you very much. And our very excellent land use administrative staff, Ms. Amy Kern is with us tonight. The current agenda can be found here, at the table, or on the town website under Board Meetings. When we begin the hearing, I will call each applicant, one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting, and we will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved, ad submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the review of the May 1st, 2023 minutes. Can I take the motion to approve the minutes, please?
Sooner.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. Do you want to...
Next one.
Okay. Did anybody review the other minutes, or we can just...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, does anybody have any questions on that? I have two tiny things, but... Anybody else?
No. I think we missed a portion of it, but I don't have the specifics, so I don't... There was one questioning that is...
Do you remember what it is? You want to read it into the record?
I don't remember the specifics of it, so I'm thinking...
Okay. I have two tiny little things. First, the beginning of it says, Chairman Alan Donlin called the meeting at order at 6:59 PM. It was 7 o'clock and 8 seconds exactly. I used my iPhone clock. I'd like that to be in the record. And then on page three... Good evening. Please note for the record if Mr. Briggs, Commissioner Briggs, is here. Richard, we're just going over the minutes. I know you were here on the last one.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have anything on the minutes?
No.
Okay. So the next thing I saw on page three, right at the top beginning, says Chairman Donlin then asked if the structure could be expanded horizontally to the east. I goofed earlier, I was saying it correctly, but I'd like east amended to say west, if possible. And that is all I have on this. Can I have a motion to amend the minutes?
Sooner.
To approve the minutes as amended, excuse me.
Sooner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Number one on the agenda is the attorney here for...
I am.
All right, so before we start this, and this is Z-23-27 202 Candle Lake Road. This is an appeal of the CEO. I have a set of procedures, sir, that I just wanted to go over with you.
Sure.
I did review them with the land use office, and I did a reviewing with Attorney Schellenberger, and they approved, but I wanted you to hear them first. You let me know if you approve, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Here we go. "When adjudicating appeals of the CEO, we must hold a public hearing and review the case de novo, which is a Latin term for anew. We must be impartial and unbiased. We must give fair consideration to both the applicant and the CEO without favoritism. We must consider all the facts and evidence submitted and use our best judgment when rendering a decision. We may uphold, slash affirm, in whole or part, or reverse in whole or part the decision of the CEO. Four votes are required to reverse wholly or in part the decision of the CEO." Does that sound correct to you, sir?
It does.
Okay, thank you very much. So first case on the agenda is Z-23-27 202 Candle Lake Road, Danbury-Slovak Jim Union, 202 Candle Lake Road Appeal. The application we had in front of us, I believe, includes the VFW on it. Okay, so would the applicant or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you.
Tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
For the record, I am Mr. Marcus. I'm under the firm of Conewolfe, DC, at 158...
Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you, thank you. It's not the first time that I've been having the pleasure, but it's certainly not the first time with this property, because it has a long history, starting with cases decided by the ZBAA back in 1989 and subsequently. The property consists of a Sokal Club and VFW Hall. Recently, the veterans of foreign wars have become a tenant on the property. Interestingly, they never really had a home in Brookfield all these years. But the VFW is one of the reasons that we're actually here this evening. I'm looking here for copies.
Take your time, sir.
Okay. I'm going to pass out... How many members are we at? Two fours.
Eight, all eight are here this evening.
Okay. Eight copies of kind of an outline of the statement of the reason. And I'll read it so that the public can hear it as well. "On or about April 18th of 2023, Francis Lally, zoning enforcement officer of the town of Brookfield, served the notice of violation on the Danbury-Slovak domestic union Sokal, which is referred to as Sokal, in connection with alleged violations of parking limitations and regulations pursuant to Special Permit 89-9 and Articles 6.0 to 12.03 of the Brookfield zoning regs. The subject property, which is owned by the Sokal, is occupied in part by the Jason D. Lewis Memorial Post Number 1201 of the VFW. The notice of violation, we believe, is an error for the following reasons. The Special Permit 89-9 limits parking of a portion of the Sokal property located in 202 Candle Lake Road. It does not impact the portion of the Sokal property which was subsequently acquired from the state of Connecticut upon the relocation of Candle Lake Road, which lies in front of the existing stone wall that marks the front line of the original Sokal property. Though an attempt was made to consolidate the parcel acquired from the state with the Sokal property, the site plan that was approved by the Brookfield Zoning Commission in 2019, the Superior Court, the Judicial District of Danbury, of Rosal Mazarro J., has overturned the approval of the site plan, leaving the 89-9 Special Permit in place, which impacts only the original Sokal property. That Special Permit was based on a variance granted by the Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals that allows parking of automobiles in the front yard of the building. The variance and the 1989 site plan do not impact the parcel property that lies between the stone wall and the current right-of-way line of Candle Lake Road. That's an abandoned portion of a highway upon which vehicles can travel and park. That's where it was, that's where it still is. The notice of violation is an error. It so far as it assumes that the parcel has been consolidated and ignores the decision of Superior Court. We tried, like hell, to consolidate that parcel, and this commission, many of you were not members at that point, actually approved it. You approved it for the 30 parking spaces that were subsequently created on the site. Not only did this commission approve it, but the zoning commission approved it. So we're arguing now about parking cars, and again, I'll subtitle this. How difficult can you make it for a bunch of old veterans to get to the meeting hall? That's really what we're talking about. How difficult are we going to make it in the town of Brookfield for veterans, guys who actually serve their country, to meet and park on the property where they meet? Where there is sufficient parking that this commission actually approved? The judge threw it out on a technicality. And actually, when the judge threw out a technicality, the judge commented in her holding that the Sokals should go back to the town of Brookfield and rezone the property to something other than a residential zone to allow parking where we want it. And of course, we did that. We followed the judge. We went to the zoning commission, and they turned down the amendment. And that, of course, is not an appeal. The other subtitle of this is, how much money will the town of Brookfield and the Sokal have to pay to resolve the parking issue on the site? Hopefully, it can be resolved this evening. But that's the history. I mean, there's nothing that's untoward about using the property to park 30 cars. However, since the judge said these parcels are not consolidated, we have the old piece in front. When the Sokal could no longer park on the approved site plan from the planning commission, and the VFW can no longer, excuse me, from the zoning commission, and they can no longer use that approved area, then they had to go back to basically parking on the road. Well, for years, people have, from time to time, pulled over to the side of Candle Lake Road and parked their cars. And that's a lousy situation, because the road is too busy and it's dangerous. So when the club asked me, if we can pull over to the side of Candle Lake Road, why can't we use the old roadway? And I said, you can't. There was no reason at all, and Fran and I disagree on that. He says you're now parking in the front yard of the old parcel, and we disagreed. And that is why we've come for item one to this commission. You get to determine whether or not we can park at least on the side of the road, off the road, as opposed to just on the side of the road. Number two. The petitioner, VFW, is a long-term tenant of the subject property. The Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is a federally chartered corporation. And with your application, I have included an excerpt from a code of federal regulations which we cite as 36 U.S.C. Chapter 2301. So you can read exactly what we'd read the status of the VFW is, both as a federally chartered corporation and as a tenant of the Sokal in the town of Brookfield. So as a federally chartered corporation, it's deemed to be an instrumentality of the federal government, much like the United States Postal Service. It is well-established that a local or state regulation, including the Brookfield zoning regulations, is superseded by the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution when it falls on an instrumentality of the federal government. And for that, I've attached a copy of the decision of Judge Cabranus. Although Judge Cabranus has recently gone senior as a federal judge on the Second Circuit, but in 1992, he was sitting in the federal court in New Haven. I had the pleasure of being in front of him, on the case of Havens versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Sherman, where it was determined that the location of the Sherman post office was not subject to the town zoning regulations. A little background, we'll read the case, it's in there. And Cabranus explains it in very quick, in very little detail, very quick summary. But essentially, in the town Sherman, there was the old post office, and everybody loved where it was, because it was right near the old town center. But the Occupational Safety Hazard Administration, OSHA, basically condemned the old post office. They wouldn't, it was not safe to work in. So the postal service had to find a new home. They put out a request for bids, and the Havens, who had just built a new building near the center, but not in the center of town, where their daughter was operating the American Pie Company, offered the property to the post office. The post office seized that opportunity to rent the property for the new post office, and the zoning commission tried to stop it. The use was allowed there, but they were trying to stop it because they wanted the post office in a different location. So we ended up in front of Judge Cabranus. The case started in the Danbury Superior Court. It was removed to the federal court because it was a federal issue, and Judge Cabranus ruled that the post office is, in fact, not subject to the zoning regulations under the supremacy clause. That's that, and the case there was the post office was merely a tenant. Somebody said, well, it's different. The VFW here is only a tenant. But in Sherman, their post office was and still is a tenant of Havens who owned the property. The... So we go on to tell you that in that case, in the instant case, the zoning regulations of the town of Brookfield cannot regulate the number or placement of the parking of cars on a site that's occupied by the VFW for its headquarters in the town. The notice of violation does not allege any specific health or safety violations, and those, they might take the matter outside the realm of the enclosed decision. Again, Cabranus indicated the building, the Safe Building Code is administered by the local building inspector, does apply to buildings that are occupied by the federal government or built by the federal government. That's health and safety, and that's it. When you get beyond health and safety, the supremacy clause takes the use of the property away from the local planning, zoning, and other regulatory agencies. So for that reason, the decision of the zoning enforcement officer has to be reversed, because it violates the supremacy clause. I'm hopeful that we don't end up going back to the federal court again to have this determined, because quite honestly, I didn't think we had to do it in 1992, but we did. And we have the benefit of, really, one of the finest judges that served in the Connecticut District Court, and then on the Second Circuit, writing the decision. So where we are this evening is appealing an order, which, if we are successful, if you agree that either the property is not within the front yard of the old parcel that was subject to your prior approval and the zoning commission's prior approval, the 89 approvals, if you determine that, that's fine. Then we, then we're home free. But if you think that, well, it really is in the front yard, then you have to look at clearly at item number two and say, but we can't regulate it. The town of Brookfield cannot regulate this, because this is a federal institution. It is no different than trying to do zoning on an army base. If you built an army base in the town of Brookfield, you would not be subject to the local zoning of the town of Brookfield. This is merely a meeting hall, but it is the headquarters of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and they do report to the Department of the Army, and they are federally chartered. So we feel that on that basis, this commission can grant our request for a finding that the parking that's going on on the site does not violate the zoning regulations, because they don't apply. Now, all that sounds very great, esoteric, and Attorney Schellenberger and I can have a field day if the case comes out against the property owner and the tenant. But in reality, if you think about it, all we're doing is asking to allow a bunch of old guys, and women, to park where this commission, your predecessors about three years ago, approved it. And the zoning commission approved it. And to the extent that Judge Rosal Mazarro found a technicality overruling those approvals, there's another technicality that says that she didn't, that they didn't have to be there in the first place. The Sokal has always attempted, and continues to attempt, to serve the town of Brookfield. They do social services, and you might hear from them this evening. Clearly, the VFW serves the town of Brookfield. The intention is to cooperate. We try to do it within the confines of whatever regulations would normally apply. But at this point, we're a little frustrated. And we're frustrated because there's no valid reason why you, if you go out to the site, you can see there's adequate parking. And it's absolutely ridiculous to say that people say, these are my contemporaries. I'm a veteran, but I don't qualify for the VFW, because I never served in a foreign war. I served here in the states. But these are my contemporaries, and to make them, make it difficult for them to attend their own meeting hall doesn't seem to make much sense. So that's where we are on this application this evening. We're hoping to put an end to what's been a ridiculously long and convoluted legal battle over essentially 17 parking spaces on a site that has more than adequate rule and has been previously approved. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll wait and see if there are any questions for the public that need to be debated.
Thank you very much, Attorney Marcus.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, do we have any response?
No.
It's easy to read in the records. So at this time, I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions that they would like to ask Mr. Marcus.
I would like to ask a question, Mr. Marcus. I was here a few years ago when this case came across our desk. And I had the opportunity to read the memorandum of decision by the court and what you're categorizing as maybe a minor... I forget how you stated it.
Technicality.
Technicality, thank you. Doesn't seem very minor to me. Can you please explain that technicality?
You mean Judge Rosal Mazarro's?
I'm speaking about the Superior Court.
Yeah, the Superior Court. She, okay, so we were before your commission a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And we came in for a variance on two grounds. One was the hardship, and we felt that the site was long and narrow. It didn't have a lot of frontage on the roads. The parking had to be in the front yard, as it was traditionally, because the building is all the way to the rear of the property. And we felt that the topography lent itself to the grant of a variance. That was number one. The second thing is that we wanted to make the property more conforming. And it's a cardinal rule among zoning boards of appeals that if a variance makes a property more conforming, you don't have to worry about a hardship, it doesn't apply. So the mere fact that the property would be more conforming is a grounds to grant a variance. So we looked at the parking that's required for this type of use. Now, use at a social club in the R.A. forty zone, we often don't. It's allowed, and that's not the issue. The issue was, what would the parking be under recurrent zoning regulations for the number of members who would use the club? And the answer was that we came up with the number of members that would be used in 30 spaces. The judge ignored that. She did not rule on the second issue. She only ruled on the hardship. So as I say, I find that to be a technical issue, that she only ruled on one thing, because your commission granted the variance for two weeks.
Okay, so putting that aside, why did you not bring up these significant issues at that time when you were appealing this case?
That you were exempt?
Yes.
Because the idea was that I just want to try working in the regulatory system. That we didn't want to go outside. Much like, by the way, the Sherman post office went all through the town planning. We went to the zoning commission, and we had a discussion, and we took their recommendations. We included it in our plans. And after all that was done, they, the commission tried to rejoin us for moving forward, because they changed their mind. So it's not uncommon to try to apply. We did. That's why we did it. As I say, the people that are members of this club are members of your community. And they don't want to say, you know, the hell is this living in the town? But at this point, as I say, we're frustrated. We've done everything actually properly, including getting the ZBAA variance and getting the zoning commission. It's a tough one.
Yeah, we were sympathetic at the time, but I do understand the difference.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, I was told to think outside the box and come up with something more creative. And I said, well, there's one other issue, and that is, we believe this falls on the Supreme.
Well, if you create it, we should ignore your second point, because, first of all, it's not clear to me that the post office is challenging relevant to this case, because they took the circumstances to the point of like this. But in effect, you're asking us to do a variance, and at the same time, telling us we're not qualified to give the variance because of the supremacy clause. So the two seem contradictory. I mean, we have to consider the issue on the first point, which is a reasonable one, or we don't consider, because we're not, we don't understand if we consider if we can use the supremacy clause as a basis for that.
So first of all, we're not asking for a variance. So your first statement, if you really think we're here for a variance, we're not. We're here asking you, as the chair of the committee, to consider the circumstances de novo and to determine whether or not the parking should be allowed on this property, either where it exists in front of the stone wall or right-of-way. Or whether, if you say, I just assume see it on the parking lot, then you can go to item two and say, well, we really don't have jurisdiction at this point. We could say that we think that you'd rather have it on the parking lot inside the facility and not outside the stone wall. And that's the second item, which is to go and say, the supremacy clause is there. So it gives you the options. And, but you've already given the variance. I mean, I'm not asking for a variance. You already gave it to us. We just can't use it.
The variance, I guess you're saying, is based, though, on the assumption that the properties were consolidated?
The original variance, I believe, was granted on safety. The original of the 89 variance was granted for reasons that I'm not...
I'm talking about the ZBAA variance that got overturned.
Yeah. The reasonable was granted part on safety. I remember the chairman made a long speech before the vote about the safety issue. Yeah, definitely on safety. And I believe, because we recognize that the property would be more conforming with the parking, but with the difficulty.
Right, and at that point, that was just on a presumption of consolidation of the property?
Exactly, because when we filed that, we filed it consolidated.
Excuse me for interrupting. I believe that was an addition of 17 spaces.
Seventeen.
So if this is a separate property, technically, you're saying, functionally, it isn't, but technically, it's a separate property. So then, the answer is that the violation is the violation of the regulations. So why are you not, in effect, using a variance from that regulation?
Well, it's the special permit that it reverted back to. That's 89-9, correct? Exactly, because essentially, we keep chasing ourselves around. And it's, by the way, I don't fault your predecessors three, four years, three years ago. When we got the variance written on the safety issue, the conclusion was correct based on fact. But if a court's going to feel that this is a self-created hardship, then we're never going to overcome that court issue. And if we can't get the court to rule on becoming more conforming, which we could, we actually asked the judge to reconsider that on that issue, which we do. we actually asked the judge to reconsider that on that issue, which he would do. So we're, so this is where we are today, to say it's, it's a comedy, a tragedy.
So all we have is this photograph to show where the cars are, and you're telling us it's not, it's part of the unconsolidated, different piece of property. So how do you know who's right? You were the zoning enforcement officer.
Well, you actually have in your files the 2019 approval.
We have a copy of the zoning board of appeals minutes dated September ninth, twenty nineteen.
Now, I'm going to show you right now where you actually view it. This is a map that comes from the Brookfield land record. It's an improvement location survey showing the Slovan property. And what you'll see here is the old right-of-way of Campbell Lake Road actually drawn in from the actual stone wall and the original entrance of the SOCO club right here, the original parking lot over here. So this is why, so this is the right-of-way with that. This is the piece that was required for this area.
Do you know the size of that piece, sir?
Point two four six.
I've got it.
It is more than a quarter acre.
Point two four six.
What is it?
Point two four six.
Is it okay to run on this, Mr. Marcus?
Yeah, point, point two four six. Yeah, yeah.
Is it okay to run on this, sir?
Yeah, you can have that. Yep, yep, I know the topic.
Point, point two four six?
Point two four six, yeah. Just about a quarter acre.
So that is this section right here, right?
Exactly.
Stonewall forward.
Stonewall forward, yeah. And that's where cars are parked now, in that picture.
So from the, the stone wall.
You're saying over here they were parked?
Yeah, from the stone wall east towards Campbell Lake Road. That's the only east.
Correct. By the way, and the approved, the ZVA variance in, in the, in the 2019 zoning site plan is the area behind the stone wall in front of the old parking lot. So it's right there.
So where are we in relation to this photo on this, this new lot? That's where that photo is, as far, as far as I can tell. So these cars on either side are parked in this section?
Yes, this, yeah, this park between Campbellwood Lake Road and the old parking lot. The old parking lot, the down round where the hole for the pole is.
Oh, okay.
Let's see if that's on this map here.
And this is the social club down there, right?
That's correct. The, 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 the social club, the VFW, is in fact an old house.
So when did the SOCO lodge acquire this other, this second property? When was that?
Yeah, for eighty-nine.
Well, that's one thing, but part of the stipulations of the special permit from eighty-nine are number two, no further addition or expansion of the site, was, wouldn't have acquired in, that piece of property been in violation of the permit at the time?
No, because the site talked about the old site.
The existing site before the new purchase.
Existing site. They didn't, there was no.
But by purchasing more land, they expanded their site. They, they had a piece of land, and they had a permit that said, "You're not allowed anymore," and then bought the extra quarter acre.
On that site? I'm saying, we, a, a, a permit is specific to a piece of property. So the permit that was given in eighty-nine did not refer to anything that wasn't on that map. That's the site. They didn't anticipate, quite honestly, in eighty-nine that the state was going to relocate the road.
But how else would you interpret the word expand?
Expand?
Yeah, as it relates to the site.
Put a new parking area here on the old site? Yeah, that would be an expansion. But we, we made it a larger site by acquiring from the state. I'm going to get you that.
I did look to try to find the original intent of the zoning commission. That was thirty-four years ago, so it's impossible.
So the.
All I can think of is they were thinking of it as the site existed at the time that they did that. That's, that's all I can think.
So the special permit does not apply to the new, relatively new area, technically, nor does the prohibition apply to the new area, is what you're saying? No, they're, they're not permitted to expand within the area of the property.
As it existed thirty-four years ago.
Right. So neither the permit nor the prohibition applies to the additional space.
You're saying the point, the quarter acre is, that's not applying to the quarter acre, the new, new, new.
They, they didn't own it at the time.
Yes. So the permit doesn't apply to them.
That makes sense to me.
Which means we need a new permit for that.
So they need a new permit.
Or, or amend the special, the special permit.
Right.
I have questions if you forgive me.
Yes, ma'am. You wish to be recognized?
Yes, sir. That's why I'm here.
You are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Rochelle Haza. I'm the acting zoning, I'm sorry, the acting land use director for the town of Brookfield. I, I have a couple of questions, if the commission doesn't mind, for Mr. Marcus.
You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. So, Mr. Marcus, so as I understand it, presently, these two, these are two separate parcels, and they're being taxed as separate parcels by the town?
No, they're being taxed as one.
Okay.
But it's two separate parcels.
Okay, so they're two separate parcels because the, the variance was denied? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. We could not do a consolidated site plan.
So what, what then is the use currently of that quarter acre property? How would you describe the use of that property right now?
Parking.
So the primary use of that, of that residential lot is, that non-conforming residential lot is parking?
Well, we don't think it's a non-conforming residential lot. We think it's a state highway abandoned right-of-way.
But regardless of what you think it is, if you're saying that it's not part of the, the parcel on which the house, the, you know, the residence is located, then it's, then it's, it's, so it's, 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 you're claiming that it's a separate parcel, and you're parking cars on it, that's, I mean, that's the way you're describing the use. And so therefore, the primary use is, seems to me to be a parking lot.
Well, actually, I should say that. They use, the club would use it for other things. For example, if they needed extra space to set up a picnic table, they could use that spot too. I mean, it's not, but I'm saying, right now, it's being used as an area to pull off the highway and park cars, which is.
And that's a grass area right now, Mr. Marcus?
It is, it is pretty much.
So then, if that is the case, the, the cars are, are in fact being parked in the front yard as well on that?
Well, the cars are being parked in the front yard because the 1989 variance allows it.
But the variance you said, I believe, is for the other parcel?
That's correct. Well, it's the front yard of the original parcel.
Well, it's the front yard of the original parcel.
Yeah, that we can definitely park it. The citation is not the word parking illegally there. I hope, because the variance clearly in 1989 was to park cars in the front yard.
Okay. But if you're parking cars on the quarter acre portion, they are still being parked in the front yard, that, and that's not allowed because it's a parcel?
Well, again, that's, that's a question as to whether that is the front yard of this parcel, or whether it's just an old abandoned highway because there was never any intention to consolidate it. However, there was an intention, but it was thrown out by the court. So we tried to do it, I would say, we tried to do it the conventional way. We can do it.
But is there not a merger in fact because of the, because of the, it's a non-conforming? I mean, just educate me. I'm, I'm not sure if I understand, because if there's a, you have this point seven-five acre lot.
Yeah.
And now you have a quarter acre lot, so that makes the, and it's the same owner, doesn't that merge the two lots because of the, because, because of the, you know, it's a merger, because it's a merger in fact, is it not, or not?
It's a merger of title.
Merger of title.
But I'm not sure it's a merger of use, and I'm not sure it's a merger of a zoning lot.
Uh-huh.
Because there was never any intention. Well, there was intention, but it was thrown out by the court.
So, so I'm still not really clear, though, then?
I'm, I'm not surprised. This whole thing is not very clear.
What the use, what the primary use of the lot is? I mean, it seems to me that the only use that's come across, you know, that's come through zoning has been this issue of cars.
Yeah, it's overflow parking. There's no question. That's a primary use.
Okay.
Yeah, the primary use is overflow.
Well, I, you know, I don't have any more questions then.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Marcus?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you. Unfortunately, I did not bring my entire file. Literally, my file is that high off the table. And I don't have my deed from the state of Connecticut. But if somebody is here from the SOCO, Mark, do you, do you know the date that you acquired from the state approximately?
Approximately nineteen ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight?
Yeah.
So that's, approximately nineteen ninety-eight is the date of acquisition. It's public record, I can find that.
So the property wasn't abandoned, and they purchased it?
Well, it was abandoned by the state.
Right, but then they.
And put up for sale into the property.
It's not really abandoned, probably it's sold, probably.
Oh, definitely sold, right. It was abandoned by the state, it's Campbellwood Lake Road.
Well, if you abandon something, you walk away from it, you don't sell it. I mean, you don't technically, you can't abandon something you sell.
What you're saying makes sense, but if you ever deal with the state of Connecticut, market transportation, you've got to deal with abandoned property. So I use language that's not miscellous. Also.
The state didn't have any more use for the property, so they abandoned.
Right. So the special permit, does that, does that attach to the property in perpetuity, or is it attached to the property as long as its function is as a social club?
As far, and I, and I can double check with the land use director, but as far as I know, the special permits stay with the land forever, kind of like a variance, unless there's a use change or an owner change. Is that, is that correct, Ms. Haza?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I wanted to just double check a question that Commissioner brings up.
Go ahead.
So as, as far as I understand, a special exemption, the, the one that they have, the special permit for the property, that is kind of like a variance, it stays with the land in perpetuity as long as it doesn't change ownership or the use change.
It's not true with this one. It says explicitly. It can go with the property on a change of ownership.
Okay, change ownership.
It goes with the land, but it is for the specific use that it was permitted.
And it's there in perpetuity?
Well, but, and my question is, is it, is it attached to a particular use? And you're saying it is.
Yes.
In other words, the, the special permit is only.
Let me give you the example.
If the use stays the same.
Let me give you the example. A church is allowed in the residential zone, and the, and the social club's allowed in the residential. If the SOCO club sold this to a church, the church would have to get their own special permit and could not use this one because it was a different permit.
Any other commissioners have any questions? You would like to be recognized, Rochelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do just want to point out that your regulations do speak specifically about non-conforming lots, and that they are automatically merged if the same owner owns the two lots and they're non-conforming.
Do you have that regulation citation?
Yes, it is. On page one, something.
Because of one point six, right?
Yeah.
C, non-conforming lots?
Yeah, it's C, non-conforming lots. I don't have the whole thing on here.
It's one point six C, Charlie?
C, correct, non-conforming lots.
So it says.
So if, if, if it's a non-conforming and the lots are merged, it becomes part of it?
So, yes, I would just think it's, it's, it's a problem to, you know, to try to claim that they're two separate lots, and then also at the same time, you know, that sometimes they're not separate and sometimes they are. But so, yeah, so then, under non-conforming lots, it says, "If two or more adjoining lots of record, one or more of which are undeveloped and fall, and failed to meet the requirements," so the second one, of course, is undeveloped, smaller one, "and failed to meet the requirements of these regulations with regard to lot area and/or lot shape were in the same ownership on June fifteenth, nineteen sixty, or subsequent date, and if such lots together would form one or more lots, each more nearly meeting the requirements of these regulations with regard to the lot, to lot area and lot shape, such lot or lots shall merge and shall no longer be considered legally existing as separate lots and must be combined and used in compliance with the present lot area and lot shape requirements irrespective of subsequent changes to ownership." So, and this is, this is often, you know, many towns have this kind of merger law to make it not, to make it more conforming. So without going to planning, to the planning commission, these are considered merged. And therefore, the use of the property is, you know, isn't, they're using this, the front lawn to park additional cars.
So what you're saying, in essence, is the special permit flows right into it, even if the lots are merged? That's your opinion?
I, I leave it, yeah, I leave it to you, but I think, I think they are considered as a lot, and that Mr. Lally's notice was, was properly issued.
And thank you very much. Do any other commissioners have any questions? I have a few, but I'll go last.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners? Okay. Do I have your permission to view the property on Google Earth, please, Attorney Marcus?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
I'm going to see if we can put it up on the big screen.
We're going to try. Let's see.
Oh, it works.
All right. I have a couple of questions, Mr. Marcus.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So up on the screen, I have, and thank you very, very much, SOCO club and VFW for allowing me to go out and look at the property, which I did. And I also did draw a map. So Attorney Marcus, when I pull up the map, I'm going to have you come up, because it's a handwritten map, and just look at it and verify a few things on it, please. But thank you for allowing me to pull up there. All right. One of the things I looked at when I went out there is I noticed that they have two signs in there, but I just, they allowed me to take a picture of one. But they have a notice, a certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal and door building official of one hundred and fifteen people. Is this correct, sir? That's on the site there now?
Yes, yes, that is, that's posted.
Okay.
That's for the building.
Sixteen.
All right. And that has been there for how many years? Since it's been the SOCO club?
That's, Mark Alwasta is the president of the club, and he has the disinformation behind him. So if I'm going to ask his assistant.
Mr. Master, you've had it before, sir. You can, you can answer that question. How many years is that certificate of occupancy from the fire marshal been there?
I couldn't tell you exactly. At least twenty years.
At least twenty years, okay. Did it have a sticker, oh, sorry, did it have a certificate of occupancy when the special permit was written in nine of nineteen eighty-nine? It had to have something.
Initially, I, I don't know who, what the, well, we're not sure why the thirteen car rule was put in effect in nineteen eighty-nine. In nineteen eighty-nine, we have twice as many members as we do now. So the thirteen cars didn't make sense then, and it really doesn't make sense now. I don't think there's any scientific study that about that, the thirteen cars. That was the size of the parking lot at the time.
The thirteen cars, sir, that is stipulation number five on the special permit. And stipulation four, I'm going to read it out loud for the record. It says, "The maximum occupancy at any time of assembly shall not exceed that specified by the fire marshal town of Brookfield." So if that number is correct, and that's issued by the fire marshal, that's one hundred and fifteen. I just did some quick math, okay? Let me know if this sounds correct to you. So at one hundred and fifteen for a certificate of occupancy, divided by thirteen spaces, you'd have to put eight point eight four six one five people or nine people per vehicle in there. If you had, as I went out there, you'd have the two and a half ton truck that Mr. Lally is aware of, but that sits out there, and that takes up one of the spaces. So that really limits you to twelve, is that correct?
There's a special permit for that.
All right. So if that, if that number is twelve, now you've got to put nine point five eight three 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 people or ten people per vehicle to fit everybody in there. Does that sound accurate to you, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Next question. So number four, as I look at and review this, which is stated in this special permit before number five, addresses the CO of one hundred and fifty by, one hundred and fifty people by the Brookfield Fire Marshal, right? He's the local authority, having jurisdiction. He goes in there, checks it out, and says, "You can legally have this many." Is that correct?
That's fixed seating.
People.
No, fixed seating.
Fixed seating.
There's a.
No, exceeded.
Exceeded.
The fire standing is seated, like a club, a nightclub, you've got standing, uh, considered. A hundred and fifty people seated.
Thank you, sir. Number five, well, and this is, this is just my consideration. The zoning commission at the time, and I looked at the due diligence and tried to find anything that went back thirty-four years and I could not find it, but it just seems to me like the zoning commission, they, they had a concern about the occupancy and what the fire marshal picked out for the occupancy. But if in fact it was anywhere close to that hundred and fifteen number back then, it just seems like the zoning commission either didn't take that into consideration or did the due diligence on it, or possibly just goofed and forgot to include it. That's my thinking on it and just my opinion.
Sir, the size of the building, just the, not in the law, sorry. It's the same size nineteen eighty-nine as it is now.
Okay, okay. So it's, it's a fair assumption to say approximately back in nineteen eighty-nine, a hundred and fifteen would have been a pretty close one. And that's, that's all we have. That's the only, inside, there was two certificates. That one was inside the front door to the left, unopposed, and then near the back door in the back was the exact same lot.
The nineteen eighty-nine, that pivots us from, and, um, to the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a next, a question for you, Mr. Marcus.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. All right, so this permit was in September of nineteen eighty-nine, right, the special permit we're talking about. The, you're familiar with the Americans with Disabilities Act, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The American, was, excuse me, the Americans with Disabilities Act, Act was a federal civil rights law signed into law on July twenty-sixth nineteen ninety. It was a few months, seven months or so after this permit was in there. So there's no way in the world, unless they were watching the news, that they could have known that this was signing, you know, passed by Congress and signed into law right at, like President Bush, in nineteen ninety. So my question to you is that, is this, would it be fair to say that, you have to tell me yes or no, please? Would it be fair to say that some of the Soco or VFW members or family or guests around that come to two oh two Candlewood Lake Road are in any way disabled, sir?
Oh, yeah. Unfortunately, that's a fair statement.
So that's, that's a fair assumption?
Yes.
Okay. Next question. Special permit eighty-nine dash nine is from nineteen eighty-nine. The ADA was signed into law on July twenty-sixth ninety-nine. Is it possible, is it possible, in your opinion, that the eighty-nine dash nine special permit in any way, shape or form has the possibility of violating the ADA, the American, the Americans with Disabilities Act?
Oh, it says it's impossible that the limitation of fifteen parking spaces would create a violation, but-
In particular, I'm talking about Title III of the ADA. I don't want to sit and re-bulging in the record, but-
Yes.
That's what I looked up. It looks like it mostly applied to this.
That's correct. I mean, there's a requirement to have reasonable access. And as I say, if you have a veteran's hall where you don't provide reasonable parking, where you're not providing full access, there is no reason that the town of Brookfield would want to limit VFW to fifteen acres, I don't think.
Next question. So I'm gonna bring up, stay there. It's coming up?
Yeah.
Let's, let's go down to the street and look at it. It's our first time using this.
Let me use it, babe.
Where's my cell phone? Is that you guys right here?
Yes. The red dot.
Oh, thank you. I just want to go down on the street real quick. Right, right there. That, get down on the street. All right. There you are. Is that your front driveway?
Yes.
Okay, and this is a view, kind of standing across the street from us. Your two oh two to the left, as I'm looking at the picture, that's two hundred. Is that, is that correct?
It appears to be correct, yes.
Okay. Here's my next question. So, um, let's just pull this piece of paper out. Would you mind coming forward, sir? I threw a little map of our property. And sir, you're more than welcome to come forward. I just want to verify a couple of things on the map. All right. So, so I did a walk-through on the property and Mrs. Gary Somer, I believe she's the treasurer, she was kind enough, yeah, I called. Thank you very much, ma'am. She was kind enough to allow me, kind enough to allow me to go over and walk through the property. So something came to my attention.
Do we need to introduce ourselves?
What's that?
Introduce ourselves.
Only if it was big.
Yeah.
My name is Michael Evans. I'm an attorney. I represent Mark Basurka.
Okay.
Owner of one ninety-eight Candlewood Lake Road, the budding property to the stock.
Thank you very much. You will have a time to see.
I know that. I'd just like to see what you're doing.
Oh, absolutely. We can get your copy of the letter as well. Anyways, on five thirteen twenty twenty-three at noon and three minutes, I walked through the property with the treasurer. That's when I took the picture and I was up to get the certificate of occupancy there. All right, unsolicited, Mrs. Somer's brought up something to me that I have to bring up with everybody here on the board, because it's relevant. So basically, we walked around on the inside of the property, showed me around the outside of the property. We're out walking in the parking lot. And Miss Somer, you can correct me if I make a mistake here. I'm just going by what I, what I remember here, ma'am. She brought up to me, basically, look, we're definitely, we're definitely afraid of getting in trouble with the town. We don't want to get any citations or fines or anything like that. So if we even think or have any possibility that we're gonna go over that number of twelve, because that's the number that they use, because the Deucen has that there, what we do is we park up on Horseshoe Lane. I'd like to show you. And I said, "Fine." So she walked me up, basically, we walked across the street. And I can bring it up on here, but we walked across the street. Come on over here. And let me face it this way, on this side of the road. So we walked across the street up to Elbow Hill Road. And you tell me if this is correct, ma'am. Took a left on Elbow, went up Elbow, and everybody knows Elbow Hill. And just up here a piece is Horseshoe. And she wanted to show me, so we walked up there and looked at it. So once you turn on to Horseshoe here, I guess one of the owners, I forget who it was, or one of the members lives there. But they, they do parking, let's see if the law will go up here. Okay, she mentioned to me that they park like all the way up to the stone wall. They can get ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, whatever amount of cars. They've made arrangements with the neighbors on this right-hand side of the road, on Horseshoe. So when we turned around, I said, "You guys park all the way up here?" And she said, "Yes, yes, sir." When we turned around, I measured it, okay? And I'm just lucky, I take exactly three foot steps. But from Horseshoe to Elbow Hill Road, going across the street where they go, that's a hundred and fifty feet. And where they cross it there, it's three hundred and sixty feet down to the, exactly to the stop sign at Elbow and Candlewood Lake Road. And then it's two hundred and fifty-two feet to the center line of, we can go back down there. Two hundred and fifty-two feet to the center line of the driveway directly across from the Soco Club's driveway. And then it's another thirty-three feet to cross that to go over there. Bottom line on it, it's seven hundred and ninety-five feet to get to safety. We'll just call it eight hundred. So as I look at it, and correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, if at any time that you have once, twice a month, or I don't know what it is, nobody spoke about it, we're in a public hearing now, but you have an overflow, that you go past that twelve. And by the way, I did call the Brookfield Police Department and I believe it's the head of traffic. I think it's the major there. I forgot his last name. And I called Brookfield Police Department to see if it was legal, you know, for off-street parking. And they said, "Absolutely, as long as it doesn't block the view, you know, the right-of-way view of the cars and stuff going around." So it is technically legal. You can park right on Candlewood Lake Road if you wanted to and you're not blocking anybody's view. So anyways, as, as I look at it, basically, I, she had mentioned to me, she goes, "Look, we thought we were gonna be over it." I think it was the day before or something. She said, "I parked up there. I hauled my stuff out of my car. This is exactly where I parked," and she walked me all the way back there. But as I see it here, from Horseshoe, once you park up there, it's a back neighborhood, there's almost no danger at all. You know, you park the car, you get out, there's no traffic or anything. You gotta walk across Elbow and down Elbow. It's pretty dangerous walking, because everybody knows Elbow Hill. At that part, you're going downhill to the stop sign. People usually haul it and then ram on the brakes and you get it there. When you hang a right there and you go on the Candlewood Lake Road, that two hundred and fifty-two feet, that, in my opinion, is very, very dangerous walking. And when you cross the road, it's extremely dangerous. So you gotta do that eight hundred feet one way to get to safety and then another eight hundred feet back. And the, the point and what I'm getting to is if it, on any of those occasions, if there's any veterans or anybody that has to walk eight hundred feet one way and eight hundred feet another way for, to get to safety, it's dangerous.
This was part of our discussion, though, years ago, and what we granted the variance on back then. But the court has taken that argument and pretty much, you know, pitched it out. They, they didn't accept that, because it's self-imposed. But I don't know if that, you have a different argument here.
Yeah, well, my, my argument is this, and in, not, not going to the court, I'm talking about, because we can't change the special permit that's there.
Right.
But we're not the legislatures. The zoning are the legislatures. My point is maybe certain things thirty-four years ago were foreseen or taken into consideration and may be worth a look by the legislatures now. But the only way that I can see, that we can get that, or we can talk about it later, is something's, it's gotta go back to them.
This already went before the zoning commission, and it went before the Danbury Superior Court in twenty eighteen. It's been discussed by multiple bodies already. The VFW and Soco were before the zoning commission, before us, in matters of trying to get the parking lots. They've looked at it. The courts have looked at it.
This is something we can, we can keep going.
Well, we can keep, yeah, you can keep saying, "We should keep pitching it back to them and let them look at it again and again and again," but they already have.
We've never pitched anything back.
Yes, sorry, if I may. The judge that you mentioned, uh, this, this-
Razzle-dazzle.
Yes. She ruled on the ZBA variance. She didn't get to the zoning.
She never ruled on-
She never ruled on the site plan and all the detail.
Which-
Which is, they explained very well in their procedure. But that's, without the variance, uh, we couldn't do the sentence.
But the thirteen cars back in nineteen eighty-nine, there's no question, the question was asked, well, how many members do you have? How, how many, do you have, and you can't have none of that. But thirteen cars was the size of the parking lot at the time, when it was a residence.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we have glossed over something I think Richard brought up earlier, which I've just been rereading. And the number two of the special permit clearly states that no further addition or expansion. And as Ms. Haza said, if there's two parcels adjacent to each other owned by the same person, then it is now one parcel, which then would be violating the terms of the special permit, if I'm correct. Which means there would be no special permit, which to me seems like a much bigger issue. And we wouldn't, I don't know that we would even be able to discuss whether they can have parking in this quarter acre lot, because they violated the special permit by making an addition or expanding the site. It says, "No further addition or expansion of the site or building shall be permitted, and no additional signage shall be permitted." But it certainly seems to me like the, there was an addition and expansion in that quarter acre.
Except for it's not part of the site.
Other than that, you're absolutely correct.
Well, I understand you're saying it's not part of the site, but we're saying, according to the, according to Brookfield, that if the same person owns an adjacent parcel, then it's one.
That's a different issue, and Rochelle may be a hundred percent correct on that issue. But you have to look at the timing. Nineteen eighty-nine, that permit was talking about a specific site. What, because before this commission in zoning in nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, was a different site. It was the old site plus the area, the quarter acre. From a zoning point of view, even if it merged, it's not what was referred to in two thousand, in nineteen eighty-nine. It happened too many years later. So you gotta be very careful, and again, these are very technical terms, but much like the question about the word abandoned.
Would that make this, this stipulation now void?
No, no, that's stipulation.
This is just for the first, for first parcel?
Yeah, the nineteen eighty-nine parcel.
Parcel before the addition of the point two four six acres.
And what they were talking to at that point was, you can't do anything else on that site, period. It didn't say, someday in the future, if you acquire a piece of property next door, you can't use it. That's not what they said.
Mr. Chairman, may I have your seat for one second? Francis Lawley, zoning enforcement officer. According to the regulations, you can't have an accessory use on a separate lot without having a primary use on the-
That's absolutely correct. Absolutely correct. Mr. Lawley, while I have you there, when, what, was this one, one six Charlie two, was that during the rewrite? Or was that prior to the rewrite? Was it already there, the twenty seventeen, eighteen rewrite?
The regarding-
One, one six Charlie two.
That was in there also, prior.
So it was in there, it was already in there before?
It was in there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we restate that, please? What your-
For, as Mr. Attorney Marcus indicates, it's a separate lot.
No, it's a separate piece. It's a separate piece. I don't think it's a parcel or a lot.
In order to use a piece of property, you need a primary use for that property. You can't have an accessory use.
So, and so parking would be in the category of an accessory use, is that correct? That's the problem.
Again, just to address that, our position is that its primary use has always been a roadway. It's always been a roadway. And it's, in a roadway, people park their cars on roadways, people drive their cars on roadways.
That was before you bought it.
Yes, yeah, yeah, but we couldn't-
But once you bought, once you bought it, then the primary use is not roadway. It's a parcel of land that can be used-
It's a shoulder of the road, yeah, it's a shoulder of the road now, basically.
It's prohibited from building a structure.
Yeah, we can't.
Indeed.
The state will not allow anything to be built on it. So it's not a parcel in the conventional sense of the word, a zoning parcel. However, it basically, you know what it really is? As I say, it's the shoulder of the road. That's what it is. It's the shoulder of Candlewood Lake Road. It's very wide.
I have another question, please.
Pardon my ignorance about the, so the original special permit was granted, I'm assuming, by the zoning commission?
Zoning commission, September nineteen eighty-nine.
Right. So, I mean, I agree with Charlie, I think kicking something back is so appealing, but wouldn't, wouldn't the simple solution be that the zoning commission just re-grant a new permit that includes this additional parcel and that would get around all of these?
Well, I was thinking the same exact thing. This is something that we can go over in our, in our discussion, but we're not the legislative body. They're the legislative body. There's only one way to get back to the legislative body, is what I'm thinking. I have a question for you, sir. This is not a variance, so it does not have the same high standard that a variance does. This is a best judgment call from us, as I spoke about in the beginning.
Correct.
Uh, we still, as the zoning board appeals, we still have to follow the law. And our primary objective and duty under the law is to protect the health, life safety, general welfare, property values and convenience of the public. That's what the law says under eighty-five and six. That's what the law says under A5 and 6. Health, life safety, general welfare, property values, and convenience of the public. So that's where I'm thinking in my mind. Does that sound correct to you, sir?
You have to correct. But you can do that, because you do a lot of discussion, almost any way you want to do it. Within the top, within certain limits, but you have a lot of discussion on how you do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Marcus. Do any other members have any other?
I think not for the attorney, but just the, something that you could say. Again, going back to the special permit. I think it's important to read number eight, the last thing that the commission said.
I did read that, I've written it a few times. I'm not sure why they put it in there, but.
Well, I think it makes it even, I think it seems like they were hesitant to give the special permit, which is why they said they want to make all parties aware that the commission considers the variance as legally granted as excessive, contrary to the spirit and intent of the zoning regulations, and therefore, conditions should be imposed to retain the residential character of the area and preserve land values. It is also the intent of these conditions to ensure that the premises revert to strict performance with the regulations at the earliest possible. It seems to me that, again, the extra quarter acre, I don't want to call it a parcel, we'll say quarter, that's the quarter acre, violated number two of the special stipulations for the special permit, saying no further expansion or addition. And even more, it's doing the opposite of what the commission left as their last stipulation, that they were hesitant to grant the special permit in the beginning, and they wanted to make sure that they retain the residential character of the area. And it sounds like an extra parking lot is doing the exact opposite of that.
I'd like to go over that more with you in discussion, but right now, I'm gonna ask if there's any other members having any other questions at all. Okay. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor of this application. Sir, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Nick Bartolomeo.
I'm sorry, I did not catch that, sir.
Nick Bartolomeo.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir.
I have nothing to do, and this is something new, I just learned about this. I live in a neighborhood of Horseshoe Drive.
Okay, where I pointed out earlier. Yes, Horseshoe, right up Elbow.
Why, anybody with common sense, real sense, somebody to cross Candlewood Lake Road and walk 700 feet to park on Horseshoe Drive, that if you look at the pictures, there is a stop sign there. Many times I come from Candlewood Lake Road, and I have to turn on Horseshoe Drive, and I see a car parked in the dark because there is no lights. And if somebody's parked at the stop sign, you cannot get into Horseshoe Drive. That's a safety issue. That's all I have to say.
I think they go up a little bit farther, and I can pull it up there, sir, if you'd like.
Yes, I can.
You're not talking about here, you're talking about Horseshoe, right?
Yeah.
Back up. Yep, too far. You know where that stone wall was earlier?
Yeah.
Which is not at the stop sign, it's up approximately 80, 90.
Yeah, but you see, there is a car parked there, that car parked right before the stop sign. Yeah, one time you come there, I turn into the road. And I see cars parked from down there all the way.
All the way to the end? Okay. Yeah, I was just told from, like, here up.
Yeah, and that's very dangerous. It's busy road, Horseshoe.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak, sir? Please come forward, sir, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Phil Durian, lived in Brookfield all my life.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a member of the VFW. I was invited, I had a person who passed away, the person I was driving, invited down there, and by the way, the ceremony was very good. I pulled down, as you saw, and they came out, said, "You gotta park up on the road." And I go, "Park on the road."
Candlewood Lake Road or up on Horseshoe, sir?
Candlewood Lake Road. And it was a 2:30 in the afternoon on a, what year, Thursday, March 1st.
2:30 in the morning.
My car was like this, and I got, and the road was here. So less than an hour, I came up, got the two cars, and a car was coming down Candlewood Lake Road, and one was going up. And they almost hit the two cars, and I wasn't even in the road. And I could feel how, that's how close it was, they didn't, those two cars before I got to my car. So all I'm saying is, you have to say, you hit it right ahead, Mrs. Brown, it's a safety stop. And if you're gonna have a problem there, you know, if you don't leave a car down there, you'll walk the property. I mean, there's parking down there, I parked right down there. There were maybe 15 people, there were 20 people, that go ahead and park up there. It was very dangerous. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And the fan's on, so you can speak up if you could. We don't have a mic here.
Should be all right. I don't wanna block. My name is Michael Perron. I live at 2009 Fountain Hill Road, number two in Milford. I was raised in Brookfield since I was two years old. Went to all Brookfield schools. I'm currently a member of the VFW as well as the SOCO. So on behalf of all the organizations who are speaking, I'm the senior vice commander of the Brookfield Post, speaking on behalf of Joe Beal, who I believe earlier today. And essentially, we're here to discuss a parking space that's already allocated. On top of that, I'm here with my wife and my six-week-old child. And the majority of the time when we do have events at the club, we reserve the 12 spots for older members. So in the case that we have an event, 12 spots are occupied, we would be walking our child in a stroller, and I believe when he came here, he saw the club firsthand.
Would you be parking up there, Horseshoe, sir?
Yes, sir. So obviously, again, based on our, what's the total numbers?
150, I think, and 140.
So our population of VFW is 115 members, obviously not all there at one point in time. But in the event that our older members are there, I'm also a disabled American veteran, so under the ADA, and I would say 95% of our post is disabled in some fashion through the healthcare system. So, you know, this, and this whole concept of hardship and everything like that, we're established members of the community, established members of that residence for quite some time now. And SOCO had the property well before any type of disputes and/or complaints were made. And if you view Brookfield police records, you will not find any type of complaint against us for any type of noise ordinance or anything else. There's been a complaint that was made during the zoning commission saying that there was a member that was threatening towards the individual to the south, not a part of our VFW, not a part of our post, and not a part of the SOCO. So he was there as a guest, and is no longer welcome back. So anything that, essentially, we're here for one reason and one reason only, because there's been complaints from one individual. We have signed petitions that were done throughout the town. We also have letters of support from all the surrounding, the marina, all the members to the south as well, that are in direct view of property. And everybody has no issue with what we do there, or how we go about our business. And again, we're here because we try and walk the line that has been, you know, instilled on us for however many years because of different regulations and as the like. But as it stands right now, you're putting people, you're asking for a bad situation to happen. And if you go on the VFW Facebook page or some type of social media, there's a video of individuals walking down, and an individual was, had his coffee, stepped on the curb, and actually fell into the roadway at some point in time, and then was able to regress back onto the street. So, I mean, like I said, if you look at the ground, if you go bird's eye view of the actual property, you see the amount of available parking that is there that we're just not allowed to use. And as a result of the recent decision, we thought, according to the attorney, that that separate parcel was eligible for parking because it is separate from the permit, and it was not a part of the adjudication. So that's what we did. And then I would also ask, how many parking violations have been given out in the town of Brookfield in the last 10 years for some parking underground grass? If this is gonna be zoned as a residential property, I would love to know how many people got a violation for parking on the personal grass? Just a general question.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none. At this time, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this application.
Good evening, my name is Michael Leventhal. I'm an attorney, I represent Mark Masurka, who owns the property at 198 Candlewood Lake Road. It's also shown as 200 Candlewood Lake Road, I believe, on the tax assessor's list. My address is 30 Huntington Street in Shelton, Connecticut.
Is Mark M-A-R-K?
Mark M-A-R-K.
Yes, M-A-R-K, yes, thanks, sir.
M-A-R-K, Masurka, M-A-S-U-R-K-A.
Thank you, sir.
I represent Mark Masurka. I actually represented Mr. Masurka on the appeal to the Superior Court of the decision of the zoning board of appeals in 2019 granting the variance. I want to bring up first a couple of things that Mr. Marcus said, which are not accurate. First of all, the Judge Brusel-Masero determined that there was no hardship, any hardship was self-created. If you go back in the history of this property, in 1989, there was a variance first granted in 1989 by the ZBA to allow 13 parking spaces contingent upon them getting a special permit to operate as a club in a residential district. It remains a residential district today. Based upon the overturning or sustaining of our appeal, the variance that was granted by this board in 2019 was turned over. The special permit was also turned over, and that was done by stipulation. Mr. Marcus's client stipulated, and that's in his Superior Court file, that because the variance appeal was sustained, that the special permit was invalid. They stipulated to it and signed stipulation. So when they tell you that, the court never addressed the special permit, that is incorrect. They agreed that the special permit was invalidated, okay?
Do you have that stipulation?
You know, here's the thing, I didn't expect to be presented with that tonight, as I did not expect to be presented with the issue of the merger of the two lots. None of that is in this appeal to you. You know, he's asked to state the reasons for his appeal. No reasons are stated. He simply submitted to you a copy of the map and a portion of the US Code. And I guess we're supposed to guess what the reason for the appeal was. So I assume, because he attached all the information about the US Code and about his claim that this post is an instrumentality of the federal government, that that was the thrust of his appeal. So some of this came out of left field when he got up and started talking about the two lots. I don't believe that was properly before you, and I don't really believe you have the right to consider it, but I'm gonna address it anyway. I have Judge Brusel-Masero's decision, if you'd like that, I was gonna present it to you. I have some extra copies in that. I didn't have probably enough for you, but I have.
I have.
Tell me what's happening.
Here's the next, right, I'm gonna keep mine just in case I have to refer to it. Judge Brusel-Masero said that, they started out in 1989 as the SOCO club. They actually applied for a permit of variance in 2014, and it was denied because the board said it was a self-created hardship then to get more parking. Thereafter, they invited the VFW to use the lot. Now, Mr. Marcus says they're a tenant. That's not what they represented, the Judge Brusel-Masero, or to this panel in 2019. If you look at the hearing notes from September 9, 2019, Mr. Beal of the VFW got up and said, "SOCO has allowed us access to the property." Never once did he say they were a tenant. And Judge Brusel-Masero made a finding that if you look at footnote one of the decision, based upon the testimony at the hearing, the yard of the property is SOCO club. But at some time after 2014, SOCO entered into an arrangement to permit the VFW post access to their location to meet and conduct events, return the record, the testimony of Mr. Joe Beal. So let me just wrap this part of my argument up. SOCO and the VFW appealed this decision to the Connecticut appellate court. First of all, let me go back a step. They said that the judge never reconsidered it. They filed a motion for her to reconsider her decision. In January of 2022, she heard us argue it again, and she denied their motion to reconsider. They then appealed it to the appellate court. The appellate court sustained her decision. They then took it to the Connecticut Supreme Court, and they refused to hear it. So they've exhausted all their remedies on that one. The property now goes back to the 1989 special permit, and it remains residential. Now, this whole argument about the two lots, they've consistently filed applications, going back to the application before you in 2019, where they say the size of the lot is 1.07 acres. That's the combined size of those two parcels.
Adds in the .246, you're saying, sir?
Correct. Even on the appeal you have before you tonight, if you look at this appeal, they say it's 1.07 acres, right on the first page.
Yes.
So, and they told Judge Brusel-Masero in all their pleadings before the Superior Court, "We acquired this additional lot in 1998." It was March of 98, they didn't record the date until 1999, which increased the size of our lot. That's what they represented to the Superior Court. Suddenly, they've entered into what the French call "l'air de main," sleight of hand. Suddenly, Mr. Marcus came in. We just had a hearing before the commission where they attempted to get a zone change from residential to the marine commercial, which was denied. That's the first time I ever heard the argument that he's making now, that these two lots are separate. They are not. They are merged by Article 1.6 of your regs. And let's assume he's right, that they're not merged. 3.4 B2 states that if it's a residential lot, you can park up to six automobiles outside in the driveway, but not otherwise within the front yard. So what they're doing is they're parking cars in that front yard, which is disallowed, even if he's correct. Now, I want to get to the other part of his argument. He's made the argument that this post is an instrumentality of our federal government. That is false.
I think I'm glad, sir.
It's completely false.
I'll wait till you're done, and I have a question.
He attached a portion of Title 36 of the U.S. Code. The U.S. Code are our nation's federal statutes. I'm handing out an excerpt from that as well.
I think we all have it in front of us, sir.
Well, not the part that I have. He only gave you a part of it. I'll give you another of it. So I've got two others. Who would like? You can see that Title 36, subtitle 2, page 2, lists all the federally chartered patriotic and national organizations, including 1305, the Little League Baseball Incorporated, 309, the Boy Scouts of America, 311, the Boys and Girls Clubs of America, 301, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And 2301, on the third page, shows the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. The Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is a corporation created under the laws of the U.S. Congress. Now...
Do you have that year in front of you when the VFW was created, sir? You just stated it. Does it show the year?
Which one?
Your... The VFW was created.
The National VFW?
Well, yeah, you're just stating it under federal law.
1989. 1989.
It was 1989?
I'm sorry, 1898. 1898.
1898.
The Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is a national corporation. I'm going to hand out to you, and they are listed with our Connecticut Secretary of State. They've registered with our Connecticut Secretary of State as a corporation. And in 2008, the last filing that they made was a certificate of appointment of an agent. And in that certificate, which was signed under oath, they state, "The Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States is a corporation duly created, organized, and existing under and by virtue of the laws of the United States Congress." Public law, and they recite that. "And has its principal place of business at 406 West 34th Street in Kansas City, Missouri." And in that, they appointed an agent for service. Now, the Jason Dean Lewis...
Yes, sir. Would you mind if I asked a quick question on that while it was fresh in my mind? So the main VFW, the main headquarters or the mother headquarters is there. Basically, all other VFWs throughout the country are satellites or almost like franchises?
I don't... No, they're separate corporations.
They're separate corporations.
They may be operating under auspices, but they're separate corporations.
Okay, thank you, sir.
For example, so the Jason Dean Lewis post is a Connecticut corporation. It was actually formed in 2022. Here's their most recent annual report that they filed in 2022. Now, in this report that they filed, they say that their principal office address is 1 Hindbrook Drive in Brookfield, not 202 Candlewood Lake Road. So if that's their principal headquarters, why didn't they tell the Secretary of State that? They don't say it's 202 Candlewood Lake Road. It's a Connecticut nonstop corporation with its principal offices located in 1 Hindbrook Drive in Brookfield. Now, let's go back to Title 36. Mr. Marcus's reasoning is that every federally chartered entity is exempt from the Brookfield zoning regulations. That's what he wants you to believe, that simply because this is a VFW post, they're not subject to regulations. They can do whatever they want. And that's not correct. That would include, if he's correct, a little league. Judge Brusel Masero made a finding that they had access to 202 Candlewood Lake Road. A little league has access to your ball fields. Does that mean they're not subject to zoning regulations? They can do whatever they want? They can stay out there all night on parties, same with the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts? That's not true.
I have a question for you, if you allow it, sir. I don't want to interrupt your flow. Is it okay to ask your question?
If I can answer.
Okay. So my question is, you heard the part in regards to safety that I brought up, and if they have an overflow, if the 12 cars are now, they can park in the street legally or like they do go up on horse shoe. How would you address the safety issue of either disabled or non-disabled, anybody walking 800 feet away?
All that was brought up by Mr. Marcus in 2019 when they sought the variance of special permits. So that was all brought to the board at that time and was addressed. So I'm not really prepared to answer that. That's not also the subject of his appeals. He's appealing from a notice of violation that was given to him by Mr. Lawler.
I understand, but that is a safety issue that came up.
I'm off.
It came up, yeah, I'm sorry. It came up in front of me, sir, so I had to bring it up to the rest of the board. Safety is one of our biggest charges here, sir.
No, it is a safety issue. It's a self-created issue. That's what Judge Brusel Masero found. It's a self-created issue.
This is your...
Self-created logic. So let's go back to this exemption. There's a difference between being a nationally chartered entity and an instrumentality of the federal government. If there was a case where a local VFW chapter is found exempt from local zoning regulations, I'm certain Mr. Marcus will give it to you. He's giving you nothing. He's giving you a case from 1992 that is not even a reported decision. It's not a reported federal decision. There are several federally chartered institutions in Brookfield. For example, federally chartered banks, the Bank of America, Citibank, Chase. They don't claim exemption from zoning regulations. They're all subject to zoning regulations. In the one case that Mr. Marcus gave to you, the 1992 case of Havens versus Planning and Zoning Commission, Judge Cabanas did find that the United States Postal Service was an instrumentality of the federal government. He said that the United States Postal Service and the WASSO were exempt from local zoning regulations. But preemption does not apply to the VFW because the VFW is not an instrumentality of the U.S. government. They're merely a federally chartered entity, as are banks, and as are these 100 or more so entities that are listed in Section 2 of Title 36. So there's a few cases I want to roll with you, and I'll try to go as quickly as I can. Case called Mount Olivet Cemetery Association versus Salt Lake City. I have copies there for you. There's two of those. I guess I can look for that. In this case, the federal government had set up a veteran cemetery in Salt Lake City, and a Utah corporation was managing it. It was a Utah entity, not a federal entity. And the court applied certain factors. And that's found at the center of the decision. Preemption may occur in three situations. One, express preemption, which occurs when the language of the federal statute reveals an express congressional intent to preempt state law. Mr. Marcus has presented you with no federal statute regarding the VFW that would preempt state law. Secondarily, field preemption occurs when the federal scheme of regulation is so pervasive that Congress must have intended to have leave no room for state to supplement it. That's not the case here. Mr. Marcus presented nothing to that to you. And the third conflict preemption, which occurs either when compliance with both federal and state laws is a physical impossibility, or when the state law stands as an obstacle to the accomplishment and execution of the full purposes and objectives of Congress. That's not the case here. They apply the factors, and they said it is apparent that the association is not a federal instrumentality. It is a nonprofit organization. It's an entity that is state-free to government and is chartered as a corporation under Utah law, as is the Jason Dean Lewis post. They are not an instrumentality of the federal government.
I have another question for you.
Yeah. Next case we're going to present is LeBron versus National Passenger Corp., which is in track. I have two copies of that. This is a U.S. Supreme Court decision written by Justice Alia, and we indicated that to be an instrumentality of the federal government yet to be controlled by the federal government, which the VFW is not. We also found that six of the directors of that entity were appointed by the President of the United States. We don't have that situation here. The federal government clearly has no control, doesn't direct the VFWs. They are not an instrumentality of the federal government.
May I ask you a quick question, sir? So what you're saying in essence is the VFW is an organization, like other organizations, is recognized by the federal government, but not part of it?
It's chartered by the federal... A national corporation is chartered by the federal government, but it's not controlled or run by the federal government.
But you're saying that the other VFWs throughout the states, and there's lots of them, hundreds, whatever the number is, through the country, are not, you know, they're part of a national organization? They don't have the same rights under the charter as the national organizations?
They have obligations they have to meet as a VFW, but the federal government is not directing their activities. That would make them an instrumentality of the federal government. That's what Mr. Marcus wants you to believe, that this post is an instrumentality of the federal government, that the federal government controls and tells them what to do. That's not the case. Judge Cabanas, in the only decision that Mr. Marcus presented, said, "Yes, the U.S. Postal Service is an instrumentality of the federal government. They deliver the mail. The mail is required to be delivered to all U.S. citizens." So that's a governmental act, that the operation of the VFW is not controlled by the federal government.
You have another question, please. When you're done, sir, I was going to ask your permission, if Mr. Masurka's here, if I could ask him a question, only if you allowed it.
Let me just confirm with him before you go down. I want to give you as many cases as I can, so you see what I'm doing. This is a decision of the United States District Court for the District of Connecticut, North Haven Planning and Zoning versus Upjohn. I only have two copies of it. Again, they reiterate what the courts have said in, for example, the LeBron case, page 5. "Under the supremacy clause of the Constitution, federal law may preempt state municipal law in several different ways. Congress may preempt state or local law by so stating in explicit terms on the face of a statute," which we don't have here regarding the VFW. "Absent such express language, preemption will be implied where federal legislation is so comprehensive in a given area as to leave no room for supplemental state or local legislation." We don't have that here. "Finally, even if Congress has not displaced state or local action, their state or local law is displaced to extent that it actually conflicts with federal law." We have no confliction here with any law. Mr. Marcus has presented you with no federal statute that applies to the VFW, only that it is, the federal corporation is a federally chartered corporation. That's all we have, as are all these other entities. Boy Scouts of America, Boys and Girls Club, different veterans organizations. Another Connecticut decision. United States of America versus Town and Windsor. Also a federal district of Connecticut. Same rationale. There have been instances where Congress has made clear its intention regarding limitation on state and local government regs. In such a case, the state or local law regulation must give way and express authority to higher federal statute. We don't have that here. Other case, Barrett Bank versus Nelson. All carry the same rationale. I don't have to recite them for you. So I just want to say that the intent of the 1989 permit was to keep the property residential. They noted it was an exceptional granting. Soco brought on the VFW in 2014, exponentially increased the use of this property.
That's R40 zoning, correct, sir?
Correct. Now, a couple other things I want to bring up. Definition of a tenant under our general statutes, 47A1 subsection F. Tenant means the lease sublease or person entitled in a rental agreement to occupy dwelling unit or premises to the exclusion of others or is otherwise defined by law. They don't occupy this property to the exclusion of others. They have access to it, there's the statute, by permission of Soco, but they never claimed they were a tenant until a useful age. I think they did that because they thought that somehow that would comport with the decision in Havens versus the Town and Sherman, but they're not an instrumentality of the federal government, so it really doesn't matter anyway. They presented an application to this board. There were different members at the time in 2019. Based upon information that frankly was not completely accurate, it was appealed, Superior Court. Superior Court sustained the appeal. They asked it to be reargued. Judge Prisal Moser heard their argument and denied it. They appealed it to both the appellate court and the Supreme Court, and everything has been sustained. They recently tried to get, and a couple of things I wanted to say. Judge Prisal Moser never told them to come and get a zoning change. It's not in the decision. They consistently represented that it was one lot. They never said it was the original lot and this small lot that they acquired in 1980 is not subject. This is all news. It's come up recently. They applied for this own change. It was denied. So this is like their Hail Mary piece here. They're now throwing this up to you to say, oh, we're an instrumentality of the federal government, therefore we're exempt, and we can do whatever we want. And I'm saying it's time for this to end. They've pretty much run out of their, exhausted all their remedies, and I would suggest that they need to abide by the 1989 special permit, and then it should be enforced by the zoning officer. And that's it. Thank you very much.
If you mind asking, or confirming, if I could possibly ask a question.
You can ask me a question, and I'll let know if I want to answer it, based on advice from my counsel.
What I wanted to do, here's the question. On March 9, 2023 zoning commission meeting, it was very compelling. You spoke an hour seventeen minutes and thirty-three seconds into it. Mr. Vasira spoke in opposition.
Vasirka.
Vasirka, thank you very much. Spoke in opposition to the application. When I watched it, it was very compelling and quite gripping, and there was a few key points that stuck out to me that I wanted to bring up. My question was just if what I'm reading sounds accurate to you. That's pretty much it, sir. Number one, in 1994, when you moved there, got along pretty good with the owners of the property, cleaned the beach with people, yard together, and then the regime changed and things went downhill. Number two, there started to be more gatherings, parties, and there was no kind and respectful communications with them, with yourself, sir. Number three, there was some horrible accusations made, and this embarrassed and enraged you, sir. Number four, Mr. Vasira stated that the battle continues and does not, he doesn't want it to be like that. He wants to go, he wants to go home after work, after a hard day's work, and have peace and quiet and tranquility. And also stated that a lot of these people are all good people. There's just a few bad apples, and they know who they are. If anything doesn't sound right, you can jump in, but I thought that this was important. If you were here, I wanted to read it, sir. Once again, you stated this is at the same meeting, that there was a lack of communication. Number five, you had a meeting with all the attorneys, and you tried to work it out to no avail. Number six, Mr. Vasirka first.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
You're making that, you're doing a snippet of that.
Yes.
Tried to work it out, and it was no avail. That was until Mr. Kennedy started to re-quote the fact that he said and called the police and said that, I was taking pictures of little girls next door.
Yes, sir.
When my parents were there. So I just want to make that clear, that he also said that again in the meeting of that, which then the police chief totally got rid of the police report, which was written up, okay?
No, I heard all that, sir.
That was first blood. You don't call somebody, tell, and make stories up. And it was five witnesses, and they're all mind readers and enough. It was nothing. I did a charity benefit that day, okay, for kids who cannot be out in the sun. And I come home, and to this guy here, who's drunk usually, comes and says these things and quotes these things to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And the police officers who were there are also members of the SOCOM club, okay, and embarrassed me in front of my parents, humiliated me, okay? Never mind defamation of character.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I didn't want to go into the details of, that's why I said horrible.
I think everybody needs to really know what has triggered this, and the life threats, et cetera, and I had the man arrested.
Yes, sir. And then last on it, you said, Mr. Vasirka, you stated that you love the VFW. You came out of the house during a time that they had a food drive, you know, got out and said, hey, I don't have any food. Do you guys take cash? And you gave them $300 in cash and said, please, please get some food. And you also mentioned that you're a patriotic guy yourself, and I might add that I believe you so. So I just wanted to see if, other than the one part I didn't include, this sounded pretty accurate to you?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to make sure your side of this was heard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time.
I think you need to continue, make a motion to continue this, because it's almost nine o'clock, and you have five more applications on the agenda.
Well, let me just finish up. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition to this, or does everybody want to continue? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. At this time, I'd like to ask, is there anybody further that would like to speak in opposition? And then you'd like to, would you like to speak, Ms. Willey?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Like everything's been said.
Is there anybody else? Okay. All right, at this time, and it is getting late on this, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this.
If everyone's been heard, do we need to continue the public hearing, or can we close the public hearing? Is there reason to continue? Everyone's spoken, they don't want to speak.
Actually, the applicant should have the right to rebuttal.
Well, yeah, we weren't gonna close it right now. You were gonna have the right. We can do that.
I have no call if you want to continue it.
I'm fine. We can do that. So let's have the, let's have the applicant have final closing remarks, unless anybody else has any other further questions or need to hear anybody, because the public hearing is still open. Anybody else? All right. Attorney Marcus?
Sure. I'll be quick.
Have your closing remarks, sir.
Just, you know, the issue, because a lot of the problems seems to be me this evening, and I want to be very clear. Of the withdrawal of the stipulation basically to overturn the site plan approval and special permit of the zoning commission, based on the fact that the judge had already ruled that the variance was no longer in effect, was in fact not a ruling on the merits of the site plan. It was a judgment overturning the approval of the site plan without ever really looking at the site plan. It was done simply because we couldn't have the site plan in front of the zoning commission once the variance had been taken away. So to me, that was not of the view of the actual site plan. We never discussed it in front of the judge, other than to say, we agree that the judgment can be to overturn the site plan based on the lack of variance. That's clear. I didn't think it was stipulated, but you read that it's a section of this, yeah.
I do have it. If the chairman would like to.
They want.
One paragraph.
Yeah, let's see.
If you'd like to interread, Mr. Chairman.
You are recognized, Michelle. Yes, thank you.
So this is in the matter of Mark Vasirka versus the zoning commission of the Town of Brookfield and Denver Slovak Gymnastics Union SOCOM Inc., June 15, 2022, Superior Court, Judicial District of Danbury. Stipulation to decision, Mark Vasirka, the zoning commission of the Town of Brookfield, and the Denver Slovak Gymnastics Union SOCOM Inc., stipulate that this court may enter and order sustaining the appeal by Mr. Vasirka of the commission's special permit given to SOCOM on October 24, 2019, allowing SOCOM to pave and maintain 30 parking spaces within the side yard of its lot located at 202 Candlewood Lake Road. The special permit shall be void, and it is signed by plaintiff, Mr. Vasirka, by his attorney, the defendant, Denver Slovak Gymnastics Union, signed by Mr. Marcus, its attorney, and also by Thomas Beecher, the attorney for the zoning commission.
Thank you very much.
It was ordered by the court, isn't it? Is it ordered by the court?
May I continue, Mr. Marcus? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yes.
The issue, again, of the, I'm not gonna go and ask the safety issue. That's pretty self-evident, the department issue. And I don't know that we really want to have you make a determination of the legal status of the VFW in its occupancy of the building. If you've ever had a groundskeeper living in your cottage on your property, and you terminate his or her services, and you ask them to leave, because they live there by virtue of the point, and they refuse, you have to admit, because they're considered a tenant. You never have lease with them, but anybody who occupies a building with a claim of right has to, is considered under our landlord tenant act, is a tenant. You have to go through the process of summary judgment, it's a summary process. Well, okay, so if the tenants upstairs in my law office, who don't inhabit it, they're by tenants. I mean, you know, I don't want them there. They're there because I like them and I invite them to be there, but they actually pay some of the cost of operating the building, as do the VFW. They pay the cost, yeah. So I'm not sure why we even go down this road, what the status of the VFW is in front of the law, but the real issue here, though, is what is the status of the VFW vis a vis the federal government, whether it is an instrumentality? So let me suggest that Judge Cabranus clearly found the postal service to be an instrumentality. The postal employees are not federal employees, they're postal employees. The postal employees, the postal service has its own budget, and it has to go to Congress to borrow money and to get approval to raise rates, but the postal service is independent of the federal government, but it's an instrumentality of the federal government. That's, there's this, that differential. The Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are not, because they don't really report to the Department of Defense. I guess maybe we'd say, well, the Department of Defense is not really part of the federal government. I mean, where do you think these veterans are? They're veterans, and they're members of the VFW, and then just under the Department of Defense. I mean, they're not out there as Boy Scouts. So this whole issue of what is.
Pardon me for one second, sir. Everybody here, we'll be respectful to everybody, please. We're trying to give everybody equal time to speak and make their points. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Well, that's what I'm suggesting is, again, the question is, well, there are only, there's only supremacy sovereignty from local zoning regulations if the purpose of the federal entity is somehow at odds with the zoning regulation. That's not true, though. I mean, in the Town of Sherman, the issue was, we don't want you there, we want you over there. It had nothing to do with the way the postal office operates. And clearly here, the question is, do you park 850 feet away from, do you park on your site? I mean, that really, that has nothing to do with a federal law or a state law. The question is, is the entity exempt or abused sovereignty under the supremacy clause? And you, as a board, are not going to be able to determine that, quite honestly. I'm just raising this, it will be in the record, not to bid, it will be before the court, because we probably would have to remove it to the federal court to have that decision made. I just, and I would encourage you to get your counsel to advise you on energy and criticism. The attorney-in-law is absolutely correct. There's no case that's directly, directly on him. Apparently, he couldn't find it, I couldn't find it. But the question is, does the VFW operate, what's its relationship with the Department of Defense? I mean, these are, these are soldiers, and they're not Boy Scouts. In many respects, they are Boy Scouts, because they do good deeds and do all that stuff. But they're soldiers. They come, this whole entity comes out of the Department of Defense program, sort of that. So I don't want you to jump to a quick conclusion, but I would suggest that you refer it for maybe legal treatment that will help guide you. But at the end of the day, quite honestly, it's a way, if you would choose to do it, it's a way for you to allow, if you think it's important, people to park in a parking lot, up to 30 cars, that you once approved. And you say, is it end runs? You can call it an end run. But it's an avenue by which this commission can, nicely say that Fran Law, he's a good guy, he's a lot of the world procedure officer, he's only a force officer, but you could say, hey, Fran, we're gonna allow this as a federal exemption, because maybe it makes sense. It's a safe place to park cars. But I do think, I didn't expect that this commission was gonna make a real learned decision and judgment on the issue of the federal interplay with the zoning regulations. I do think it's an issue, but I also think it's a way that you can resolve this if you want to. The other way, of course, is to find that this area in the front, which is not the optimal place to park cars, is in fact the shoulder of the old roadway. And I agree with Mr. Lethardot, when he said, we filed with the court over an acre parcel we unified. I said that we tried to merge it. We couldn't. We were unfortunately not successfully doing that. To the extent that we had been sighted by a zoning force officer, we had to identify the entire property as a site. We were not sighted by a zoning force officer for just the area in front of the stone wall. We were sighted for the whole site. Sighted for the scene for the site with an F. The fact of the matter is, that's why it strays that way in the application. I thank you for your time and consideration, and as I said, I encourage you to get some guidance on the federal issue, because it is very complicated, honestly.
Thank you very much, Attorney Marcus.
Thank you.
Do, before we close.
I'd like to say something, I might.
Yes.
This is closing arguments, sir. Is this a rebuttal?
Yeah.
This is. I might be the only veteran in this room, by the way, and I'm associated with the VFW. The VFW has no connection to the Department of Defense whatsoever.
Could you please come forward, state your name and address to the record, sir? Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Lawrence Karanko, 72 Park Avenue, Bridgeport.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you can say, I don't know how you can say that the VFW has anything to do with the Department of Defense. It does not. That's just not, you shouldn't do that to the VFW.
Suspicious argument, correct. It doesn't make any sense.
It has nothing to do with the Department of Defense.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. Marcus, would you like the final word on that again, sir? Because we were in the closing part, so you have a right to speak again, sir?
No, I just.
If you'd like to.
I think that it's important for your counsel to guide you on that issue, as to what the actual relationship is. And, you know, as I say, the, that's not the controlling issue, but it is an issue that is tangential to the determination of what the legal status is of a VFW vis a vis the supremacy clause. But it's, one issue is not going to decide it, but if you look at the entirety of the relationship of this entity within the framework of the federal government, that's the issue.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing portion, is there anybody that has any further questions at all? Because after we close the public hearing, and it's only opinion from the Lanier's office or the town attorney. So is there anybody at all that has any last minute questions?
I have one question for the attorney for, Attorney Marcus. So is there a lease between the VFW and SOCOM Lodge?
There's a written agreement between them. That's, yeah, it's an agreement. It's a lease. I mean, you know, it's not a formal lease, but it's a written agreement.
Well, the question is, does the lease specify a regular rental amount to be paid?
They have an arrangement as to costs that are being shared.
But that's not a rent.
Well, that's what it is.
It's a monetary. Technically, he's trying to say.
It's the way they determine the rent.
Any further questions to follow up on that?
No, sir.
Any further questions to follow up? Okay, this time I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash 23 dash 6.7. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll take a motion to take.
Did you want to, Mr. Chairman, did you want to just say that it passed or it?
We're going to have deliberations on it.
I know.
So she just took a motion, she's saying.
She took the motion.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The motion to close passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, it'll take a five minute recess.
You have a second.
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, we're going to take a five minute recess. It is 9:11 right now.
16.
9:16, we'll be back.
I want to thank you, I want to thank you for sending the donation. I'm so happy you got it.
Are you a better?
And I'd like to know, what was the donation?
I actually belong to the VFW. It does really.
Seven was our last year's goal.
Second White Armored Hospital.
I don't get that sense. I think it's way too late, we have five other, five other things on the agenda.
I think we're going to want to consult.
Because I'm not on the agenda.
This is what, this is what you get for being a zoning director.
Yeah, but she's still small.
I know. It can't be that bad. She's so small.
No, it's actually great. I love it.
It's just a little late.
So that's the big worst of it, right?
Exactly.
Michelle, did they replace?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't know why she did that.
Of course, it all holds up.
I have a surprise.
She started today.
Maybe she's still there doing something.
She went home at 4:00.
They're on the side of it, it's uncomfortable, right? You got, you got protection.
So what are they going to do, though?
This is where it's going to take a lot of time.
I'm saying, I got a lot of work.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
What's happening?
It's unbelievable.
It's true.
It's true.
I could have told you that.
But, you know, this is my last thing, my last hurrah.
I already started. I started a couple of weeks ago, but then I was on vacation. I just got back from vacation last night. Seven hours time difference. Right now it's like 3:00 in the morning.
Where'd you go?
I went to Maracay the Reese.
Oh, my God. Good for you.
But I already started over there, I was working in bed.
I worked more than I did that week.
Many less hours, 23 hours than we did there.
One meeting a month.
As opposed to seven, six or seven.
I do.
The only one meeting a month.
Nice, nice.
So you're a good guy.
Nice guy, nice to meet you, because he's a good guy.
Ready, tension, everybody? So, oh, I'm sorry, are we here? Tension, everybody, are we reopening the meeting? Thank you. We're out of recess. We are at the June 5th, 2023 meeting, and it is 9:16 PM. Okay. So right now, we're on application number two, which is Z dash 23 dash 24, 33A, Carmen Hill Road, request for variance 3 dot 4, 3 dot 5, and 3 dot 16D. Accessory front yard, 20 feet to the front lot line, and accessory apartment in excess of 800 square feet. Would the applicant or proponent of the applicant please come forward, state your name and address for the record?
Justin Juliano, 33A Carmen Hill Road, Brookfield, Connecticut.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, I think it was a 20 foot acceptance.
I have a letter.
Oh, I can read that now.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Juliano.
I think it was a 20 foot acceptance, or I think it was 30 feet to the front property line.
Yes, 20, 20 foot variance request.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Not 20 feet to the property line, but 30 foot, 20 foot acceptance, right? Just want to make sure that you guys had it correct before we went forward.
Yeah.
For variance per location.
Yeah, I'll read them one more time, sorry to interrupt you. So the proposed dimension is a structure to the front lot line, required dimension 50 feet, proposed dimension is 30 feet, so your variance request is for 20 feet. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then the accessory structure to the front yard, which is Article 3 dot 16, required dimension, this is 480, yeah, so this is 480 feet square feet, proposed dimension is 1200 square feet, 480 to 800 square feet, proposed dimension is 1200 square feet, so you're looking for a variance of 400 square feet.
Correct.
To that accessory structure.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, been working for like 10 years, looking to build a structure in my front yard for my parents who retired, my mom's disability, move up to our property. That's the plan. And I want my front yard because my septic, you have my house in my backyard, and accessibility is a lot easier in the front yard rather than backyard. And then the 30 foot, because otherwise it's going to be too close to the well, and then I run into the septic issues with distance and all that stuff.
Yep. I believe we have some correspondence.
Yes, this correspondence is Alicia from, Alicia, I'm sorry, it's from Alicia Alveranja, who lives at 33 Carmen Hill Road in Brookfield. And she says, I spoke with my neighbor, Justin Juliano, Juliano?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Juliano, who requested a variance at the below address, 33 Carmen Hill Road in Brookfield. I support this variance request and do not have any concerns regarding it.
True. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners who have any questions at all for the applicant.
Is this the neighbor that lives in front of you?
It would be, yes, this house.
And she's the one that's good.
Yes, correct. I have a flat, shit property, so the yard goes up to the left and she's.
And is that your shed, right on the edge?
No, there's actually no shed over there. Yeah.
So the hardships are because of physical disabilities?
For their square footage, correct.
Okay, and what about the hardship for the front lot line?
On the septic system.
Is there a way to reduce the variance so that you could be more conforming, push it closer to the house?
With this question, I would just about to ask.
There, I can, but then I lose my whole front yard. Now I have no front yard, it's great, the common house, it's great, and I just want to be there at all.
So the, this is the existing structure of the house?
Correct, yes.
And this is the footprint for the.
Yes, my one apartment.
Do you know what the distance is from here to there?
The exact, I do not know.
Is it 100 feet?
No, no. No, not even, not really.
And the septic system?
Is ridiculous.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you very, very much for allowing me to go out and look at the property.
No problem, next rainy day, you can.
Yeah, that's why everything's smeared on it, it was right now. Okay, a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
First of all, I see on the map exactly where you had it. Could you do me a favor and, it's not news, it's very smooth everywhere, just draw on exactly where the septic system is.
Read it.
Okay, and the fields.
So the tanks about here?
Yeah. See, I wrote septic tank, but I can't read because it's smeared. So it's the septic tank and the fields are basically on the eastern or behind the back of the house.
Correct, exactly, yes.
Okay, my question is this, where you have it right now, I have a two-part question, one was the size, and what was your thought behind not moving it, Commissioner Hinger said, Commissioner Tupper said, moving it more to the north and to the east? I remember when we were going out on your property, it was kind of like bushes in the hedge line and stuff, basically this section of your property over here. What was your thinking, why it had to be there? Because there's no, there's no septic, it's not staying in the front of your house here. But why not push it over and back in this area? That was just a question that I had.
Well, because.
So north, north, certainly north and kind of western.
Like over here, you're thinking more along that.
Right, right, right about where that axis.
Because, I mean, it's more personal, but I want to make this more yard property for us to, to obviously be taking up more space, plus, unless it's like where they have the yard.
Right about, does this look accurate, right about where I drew the square line?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That's pretty much woods, there's woods over here and then there's trees and bushes over there.
Exactly, yes. That's more going to be, I want that more yard, the area.
And then my next question is, is the amount of square footage on the apartment, I understand it's for right now, you said, mother and mom?
My mom, my mom.
Your mom is going to go in there.
Yes.
You need accessibility and stuff like that, but as the zoning board of appeals, we have to think 10, 20, 50, 100 years down the road. Is there, is there any way that instead of the 1200 square feet, maybe 1,000 square feet, you must bring in a difference between 800 and the 1200, where you could get, I have a picture of a plan in here.
Yeah.
That was basically my last question on that. Is it possible, just a little bit, not all, but a little bit?
Well, then, she's not, so she's not wheelchair yet, which will be, so the extra interior space would be ideal for her and the therapy room is all.
Yeah, but the front head, you have the garage area, so this is.
Incorrect, yes.
But your square footage is the overall dimension, is that what the garage and with the living space area?
The 1200 is just this part, yeah.
Okay, that's 1200. So there's no way, not a lot, but a couple hundred square feet that can pack this down, just a little?
Then it means just everything a lot, and my bathroom, bathroom has to be smaller, everything has to be narrow, so when she doesn't, well, she doesn't, they think she's in a wheelchair, that's making everything a lot harder with a smaller bathroom, smaller bedroom, smaller accessibility. Yeah, she, correct, the doorways, the opening, all that combined, that extra square feet is a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear about the reasoning behind, I think you asked that question.
Yes.
I'd like to understand that.
Yeah, here's the exact argument I had there before, you can follow it. So my first, my first question was, on the northern side of the property, okay? This is exactly how it looks out there, right on this square line, there's basically woods and there's trees and there are bushes. So why not push where you want to put it, a little bit farther to the north, and you could go a little bit to the east, you know what I mean? Is it, is it a possibility? That's the main question.
It is a possibility, I might say it's not, but I was saying that I want that more for yard, property, my kids playing and all that stuff, because, and then, of course, on cost expense, I know that's not a hardship, but then of course, a lot more money to have a drive to build it all the way back to here, rather than right now, you saw where it is, it's great.
Right, if you build a driveway.
Only, only pass line driveway, because you don't see on this, I'm going to put no drones on it, but there's actually, this will work, this will work, this will work. It's for that, his scribble scribble.
My, my.
There's actually two parking spots right here, so there's a little drive and out code, so we only have to make an extra, you know, 20 feet of drive, rather than having to go all the way back to here, it's going to cost a lot more money than you really want to spend. Expand the driveway that much further.
This is the neighbor that says it's all good.
Yes, yes.
Alicia.
Yeah, there is two parking spots right here, the driveway, part of the driveway, we don't have to extend it not that far, I think it was 20 feet, not that far. If you're going to double on that side, it's ready to go in the 20 feet back.
So I'm, I'm clear about something, so the barn and the living area, none of this is uh.
Correct, there's nothing there now, correct.
So these dimensions, 40 by 50, that's not accurate then?
Yeah.
2,000 square feet.
But the living area is the.
Exactly, that is the problem.
Yes, yes, and I was saying, there was two parking lots here, the driveway actually comes right in.
But your house is here.
Yeah, 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 so my full driveway comes here, but the garage is two parking areas here.
Is there, was there a reason not to have the whole thing much more practically close to the main house?
That, that takes away my whole front, I have no yard there.
And then the yard on the other side, it's this whole section, what's a here, and you have this whole area of yard. He was explaining the driveway to get to it, from one driveway to the other.
As well, so yeah, there's a driveway right here.
Right.
I was right here too, yes, correct.
You're well.
Yeah, I was right there. And then you have to progress around the well to drive it both.
Can I ask you one more time the same question, so is there any possibility at all, whether you're saying there's none, to basically meet in the middle, instead of the 1,200, 800 is what the regulation says, 1,000 square feet? You don't think that it would be useful and safe?
Correct, I don't think it would, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, because like I said, at that moment, we're thinking, gee, right, my parents are going to drive me, pass away, you know, they're not, this is their final, this is their end, they're in, what they're doing, and it's, it won't work at that time.
I have a question regarding the square footage. And this might be a question that's also for Michelle, or we might need our attorney to ask as well, but my understanding of, you know, the zoning board of appeals and our, like, our authority is that we deal with hardships of the land.
Correct.
And that are unique to the property. And this hardship of size seems more something, it's, you know, a personal issue, and it seems more in regards to something like the America, Americans with Disabilities Act, and that's not really our authority. This is a hardship that you would have needing the extra square footage if you had any other property in Brookfield because of the size requirements.
And then, kind of yard and the other side, it's a whole section, what's a here, and you have this whole area of yard. He was explaining the driveway to get to it, from one driveway to the other side.
So yeah, there's a driveway right here.
Right.
I was right here too, yes, correct.
You're well, yeah.
Yeah, then you have to progress around the well to drive it involved.
Can I ask you one more time the same question, so is there any possibility, at all, whether you're saying there's none, to basically meet in the middle, instead of the twelve hundred, eight hundred is what the regulation says, a thousand square feet? You don't think that it would be useful and safe?
Correct, I don't think it would, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, because, like I said, at that moment, we're thinking, gee, right, our parents are gonna drive to make pass away, you know, they're not, this is their final, this is their end, they're in what they're doing, and it, it's, it won't work at that time.
I have a question regarding the square footage. And this might be a question that's also for Michelle, or we might need our attorney to ask as well, but my understanding of, you know, the zoning board of appeals and our, like, our authority is that we deal with hardships of the land.
Correct.
And that are unique to the property, and this hardship of size seems more something, it, it's, you know, a personal issue, and it seems more in regards to something like the America, Americans with Disabilities Act, and that's not really our authority. This is a hardship that you would have needing the extra square footage if you had any other property in Brookfield because of the size requirements. So because it's a personal hardship, I don't know if we have the authority to give it, that might need, and that might be a question for our attorney, or if Michelle would know, but you might need a judge to allow you to have something like that if it's an America with Disabilities issue and not a zoning property size.
We can, we can go over that further in discussion, but basically what he's asking is, please explain the exact hardship in regards to your application, sir.
I don't have a property hardship for that, that needs to be answered.
The garage is a one-car garage?
Well, it's, it's a...
Twenty feet.
Barn, yeah, twenty feet, five by...
So that you wouldn't be able to, there are two cars on there, then?
And then your septic beams and septic in the well, are there any hardships, are they...
The well is here? There's septic's here.
Yeah, so it's, so here you couldn't, you could not go here?
You gotta go behind the house.
Yeah. You can't go behind the house?
Septic and its field and tank.
The well's right here, are you, are you, how far is the well from the proposed structure?
It's about forty feet.
Any questions?
People ask me, too.
Well, is there any questions? Anybody, anybody else have any questions? I have a question, I just, I guess, I think it seems like it could be, the whole, the whole additional piece structure could be moved. I mean, there's room to move it much closer to the house, it may not be desirable to do that for various reasons, but if you had it within, you know, you could even have it attached, or even if you didn't want, you could have it ten feet separated from the house, and then you have, you're gonna have, it looks like, you know, at least eighty, ninety feet before the property line.
North of the house too, right?
Yeah, northern house, that's where I was first, yeah.
Yes.
North, well, you know, it goes in there, but... And you're kind of running into the property line on that side, though.
We have very limited authority, that's why.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
Each hardship, that's basically what it is.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Hauser, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, as a follow-up to what Vice Chairman Hinger noted, so an applicant can't ask for any kind of a variance, they won't, whether or not the commission grants it, is up to the commission, based on, again, on hardship posed by, you know, circumstances not created by the property owner, him or herself. So you would, you would rule on that one as well, but as you, you know, as you've noted, there may not be a hardship for that particular place, that's kind of assured of it.
Thank you.
But I would address each variance request.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hager. Any other commissioners have any questions? Was there any correspondence, I don't believe it was, you read that?
That was the, the only one, Mr. Chairman.
Just go ahead, just go ahead, okay. All right, so I'm just gonna ask, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none, so you have the final word, you can say whatever you like.
Pause in your court.
Let's, thank you, Ms. Juliano, thank you very much. All right. I would like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, Justin Juliano residence, thirty-three Carmel Hill Road. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion by... Sorry about that. Motion by Ms. Temple and seconded by Mr. Hinger. All those in favor closing the public hearing?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, this question, yes. You're ready, we have about thirty seconds. Okay, next on the agenda. I'll wait for you here.
No, okay, sorry.
All right, next on the agenda is application Z dash twenty-three dash thirty, Artel Engineering Group LLC, Landowner of Records, seven thirty-one Federal Road LLC, CEO Scalzo Property Management, and this, I swear, appeals on this. So this, this variance request is for, basically, a twenty-four point five zero foot variance on the front, I believe it's the front yard for parking spots. Would the applicant or proponent of the applicants, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal.
Hi, good evening, Michelle Morris McColey with Artel Engineering at Brookfield. Before you is, it said seven thirty-one Federal Road, it's a seven point three acre parcel that's owned in the TCD zoning district. It's a long, narrow property that's bound by Federal Road to the west and the Still River to the east. We have received zoning and inland wetland commission approvals, the approvals were for a, I'm sorry, can you say?
Nope, no problem.
A three-story building with retail on the first floor, second and third floors are residential apartments and parking, as well as a standalone drive-through restaurant in the southern portion of the property. We are before you tonight because we are looking to add twenty-six parking spaces in the northwestern portion of the property. We did receive a variance two years ago for the drive aisle. We've now, in speaking with the town, we're looking to add some additional parking spaces to kind of service the greenway, which runs parallel to our property, so we're gonna be, we're looking to add twenty-six parking spaces with some dedicated for the greenway. The, as you mentioned, the parking is essentially a half a foot from the parking lots, we're looking for a variance of twenty-four point five feet. I just want to note that although that we are close to the property line, from the edge of Federal Road, we are fifty-three feet, and from the greenway, we're about twenty-seven feet, so we still have a nice buffer from the main road and the greenway. We're seeking the variance due to the hardship of the narrowness of the lot, the topography, and, you know, the location of the Still River, and how close everything is, and I know when we originally got our approvals, the wetland commission had requested a buffer from the Still River, so we're trying to continue to maintain that buffer, so I didn't adjust the eastern edge of the parking so that we could keep that fifty-foot, uh, weariness buffer is what they had requested at the time.
Thank you. Do we have any letters, any correspondence to read into the record?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any questions that any commissioners have, from Ms. McLean.
Could you just reiterate, I think you said, but how far is the proposed parking lot from the paved, the paved trail?
It is about twenty-seven feet. Twenty-six point eight, I think is what we measured it.
I was gonna ask you for a start, but is it okay to pull it up on?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
How many parking spots total do you have allocated at this point? You said these are additional spots because you already have...
So this lot, this part of the parking up here has always been intended to be allocated for the greenway, so we're looking to add these parts, parking seats as well, so to offset losing these spaces, we're adding the twenty-six spaces.
So how many of the twenty-six would be for the greenway and...
Well, so, these will not be for the greenway, but these will, so we're to offset giving these to the greenway, we're adding these for development, if that makes sense.
Okay, the total parking spaces?
So total, everything is a hundred and eighty-eight spaces.
Could you start construction on this?
Yes, it is under construction.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, there it is.
So...
It's actually right behind.
So the Dunkin' Donuts?
It's right in front of you.
Just to, so the Portabellos, right, and Dunkin' Donuts is right across the street, so this entranceway, right now, the construction entrance is actually a little further down, but this will be, the entranceway into these parking spaces will be perpendicular to that.
Can I ask my question before my battery dies here? It's about to die. No, it's okay, good time. Okay, Ms. McLean, I did take a look last week, I looked out with zoning enforcement officer at the wall, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Basically, the reason why I pulled this up is that telephone pole right there, I wanted to point out that telephone pole, we're looking at it.
Yep.
Right behind there is basically the additional parking spots, I know that that's, ah, I lost it again, but that, that entrance there is kind of a temporary entrance?
Correct, yeah.
Let me see if I can get close to that telephone pole, that's the one I wanted to point out. Okay, it's down this way. Okay, so that telephone pole right there, let me just turn it back away one, if I go too many clicks, it goes all the way out. Okay, right now, that's the construction entrance, it's right about there.
Correct.
Okay, and that telephone pole, the reason why I brought it up is I wanted to, you'll be able to tell what I'm saying on the map if you know that telephone pole.
No, it's actually right where the setback is.
Yeah, it's a big problem. So as I look at it, you can feel free to come forward. So that's the northern part, northern part of Federal Road, Route Seventy. So basically, where you're looking for, that telephone pole, that is right there, that's the one I showed on the map.
Correct.
So they're starting, the additional parking spots are starting on the right, so from the telephone pole, I don't know if I count them over, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, about eleven or so, over, over to the northeast side. Okay, so the telephone pole is almost roughly in half of left and right, or north and south, on where the parking spots are gonna go.
Correct.
Okay, my question is this, and then right about here, that's where the repairing buffer is?
Well, it's this whole, so this is the edge of the wetlands right there, so she had requested in here is the ripraring buffer.
Okay, and that's the, this is the greenway, the back kind of square looking one on the far northern side of the property. That's, you guys kind of felt that it was reserved for greenway people.
Right, that's always the main attention to that lot, yeah.
Okay, here's my question, and I know you spent a long time in this, because there were some of the meetings on it, you went through wetlands, you went through zoning, you went through a whole lot of people, why weren't these considered ahead of time? The request on these. Can I speak in here, Chairman? Please go forward, state your name and address for the record, though, sir. Okay. I'm gonna, just be careful if you go that way. I'll try not to match the camera over.
Oh, that's good.
Paul Scalzo.
Paul Scalzo.
A member of thirty-one oh seven applicant. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir. Thank you. Before we started this, we had a proposed tax abatement, but it was a flat map, no wetlands were done for us to bring the grocery store in, not knowing that there was a wetlands and a buffer there, and we actually proposed to the town to get thirty-six spaces. And when going through planning, obviously, because of wetlands and the repairing, east, what's it called?
Buffer.
Buffer, thank you.
Just very...
We only got sixteen of them, so we're proposing to get up to the thirty-six by using this, this plan here and some of seven oh one Federal Road, but the bulk of them are gonna be down here, like twenty-six spaces, with signage saying, you know, greenway, parking like seven in the morning to eight at night, or something like that, that's, that's the plan, that's the reason why we're coming back.
Thank you.
I specifically remember seven oh one, because that came in front of us a while ago in New York, you had to disturb a hundred square feet of wetlands, I remember it totally. So we may do ten of them up there, we've been working with both selectmen, all three, the first selectman and the other selectman, on trying to figure out how we were gonna do this without impacting, you know, additional parking for the grocery store that's needed. I have two, two little questions for you, I'm trying to make them short, this is my question. Okay, I'd like you maybe, if possible, and Mr. Scalzo, he did kind of answer that, but when, when we did the rewrite, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen rewrite, the town did, it's been a hundred thousand dollars on it, and they rewrote a big part of zoning regulations, and specifically, the whole entire TCD. So they had it planned out through the planning commission and zoning and everybody else that was involved, to look a certain way. And I know that in going back and researching it, that, you know, there was a specific reason that they didn't want to have parking that close, you know, they wanted that extra barrier there. In your opinion, does this meet and stay with the original intent of what the TCD was, or...
I think so, because I think a lot of these other properties in the TCD are closer to Federal Road, where our property line is set further back, so it keeps the property, by putting it up to our property line, where other properties have their property line closer to Federal Road, the apartment is closer to Federal, and we're still providing a buffer between Federal Road and our property.
So it's your opinion that even if it's like that, it would still be keeping in harmony with the original intent, with the design of the TCD?
Correct, yes.
Okay, real quickly, again, in detail, just tell us the exact, exact, unique hardship in regards to the extra spaces. You're basically asking us for, it's a ninety-eight percent reduction.
Correct.
Okay, the math on it, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet, you want twenty-four and a half feet, within six inches of it, so it's a ninety-eight percent reduction.
Right, I think it's the lot shape, because we're a very narrow lot, it's a part of the hardship, because of the topography, especially because of the back, it's still it's down, it goes drop off to the wetland, and obviously, the Still River and the upper, the ripraring and buffer and the upper of the area are hardships.
Last question on this, explain to me exactly how it's not a self-induced hardship.
Are you working with the town?
We are working with the town.
And the town has requested these permits, correct, right?
Yes.
So I, I would be pleased something over.
Well, it's required on a, by an, on a tax abatement, is that correct now?
Right, but they also requested additional, you know, parking spaces to service the trailway, so that, you know, as their request, that's why we added these.
But that has something to do with the tax abatement? Am I, Mr. Scalzo, you're welcome to jump in here if you'd like, sir.
Yeah, when we went forward, we ran into wetlands, not knowing that we even had that wetlands there. The agreement was made pre-wetlands, and the wetlands included us to obviously get some of the spaces for the greenways, they wanted the plus, and the shape of the buffer, and, you know, the grade, and going through wetlands with buffer, that's...
And what, and what time was it, before or during the wetlands, when the tax abatement thing came in? Basically, the town said, hey, give us some more spaces for the greenway and stuff, we need a tax abatement, is that, is that what you're saying, sir, I don't want to worry anymore?
No, that's, the tax abatement was done to bring the grocery store in. The tax abatement was done very early to bring the grocery store in.
All right, so that was for the grocery store?
For, to induce them to come to town.
Okay, so what part of, and your question, I'm understanding, please explain the part about the town and the meaning of the extra spaces, so it has nothing really to do with the tax abatement, what are you saying?
No, the extra, I mean...
Yeah, on, on the, the extra spaces, that really has nothing to do with it, the grocery store has to do with the tax abatement, okay.
It, it, because of the, there's a great use of that trailway, so they're, we're looking for additional parking spaces, and to provide the additional parking spaces, you know, we're, we need to be able to go into that part, there's that back.
But those parking spaces are for, for retail, and the other people are there because you set aside the other part for, like, the greenway?
The greenway.
I think I understand.
What's the, what's the distance between your property line and Federal Road?
From the prop, so the property line to Federal Road is fifty-three point three six feet.
So when exiting... So, when exiting, they would have enough room with the parking exiting onto Federal Road?
Yeah, so this exit here is only a right, a northbound exit. So, if they wanted to go southbound, they'd have to turn back and come out, go through the light to pull that through.
We'll see if they do it. We'll see if they do it.
I have one more question. So, from that pole, I can't bring it up again, but from right where that pole was to the edge of the road, I took my tape and measured, it's thirty-two feet. Is that pretty close to you?
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Okay, and then, from the backside of that pole to, this is the front edge of your parking line, is that another six feet right there? I measured from here, this is from the pole taking there, so from the backside of the pole, you know, I had to guess them, it's about six feet over there?
One second.
I'm only getting thirty-eight feet, I'm not getting fifty, so that's where I'm at. That number, it seems a little off. Is that... Yeah, from the, from the...
From the pole to the edge, this is the edge of Federal Road there, is thirty-two, thirty-three.
Thirty-two.
From the pole to the edge of the parking is twenty-five.
You have twenty-five, so that's it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're at fifty-seven?
Well, the six feet, this six feet is...
Well, that's the little piece in between, right?
Is, yeah, we're in the front yards from that, different regulation.
So, it's technically fifty-seven feet. That's the number also.
From that spot, yes.
Back to there.
From the closest spot, which is a little further south, it's fifty-two, you know, almost fifty-four.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Any other questions? This time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor of this application. Yes, sir? Please write, you want to add your name and address for the record? Tell us about...
Frank Dembowski, I'm here, not as a resident, because I don't live in Brookfield. Address, uh, two fifty North North Street, Bridgewater.
Thank you.
But I'm here to speak in my capacity as the Economic Development Manager for the town. And I will tell you, the number-one complaint we get in our downtown is not enough parking. If you were the block party yesterday, for example, we still heard a couple complaints about that. So, I am absolutely in favor of this for the much-needed parking in our TCD. I also agree with the applicant that this is consistent with our TCD design, more parking. In fact, if you go to the original plans, and back in twenty-twelve, they talked about the town purchasing land for a parking lot. The town owns no land in the TCD. So, anytime we have a developer that comes in with this application, and the one that Snacks will be speaking of as well, anytime they want to donate some of their land for public parking, from an economic development, parking perspective, our TCD, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. I have a question for you, sir. When you spoke about the TCD and the parking, yeah, they wanted more parking, but they also wanted a buffer, and that was the original intent, that's how I understood it.
Yeah, this has the trail in between, it's sloped down after the trail.
Right.
Again, I think, given the topography and the challenges, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How many parkings does the town get?
How many total parkings would the town get?
Well, right now, well, right now, what we have is all the parking on Federal Road and Station Road. I don't know the exact number, but, oh, with this.
From this particular...
It'll be with this project, and the number will be thirty-six, so there's twenty-six in here and ten from the property.
So, thirty-six?
And just to give you an idea, all the parking we've added, parallel parking on the road through the state, because it's, that's all on state land, there's something like fifty-six or so parking places. So, this is a tremendous increase to the much-needed parking. In fact, we have some commercial tenants who complain, they've opened up their business in Brookfield Village, and their customers can't, nowhere for their customers to park. So, I'm in favor of it.
To be on Federal Road, to be on Federal Road?
Parking anywhere. Luckily, we have sidewalks now and crosswalks, so I think if they could park anywhere on our TCD, they can walk, if they can't get close by, hopefully walk to a place of where they choose to do business. Thank you. I have a follow-up question for you, ma'am. The variance you're requesting is twenty-four and a half feet, twenty-four six. Is there a possibility that you could reevaluate, you're the engineer, I'm not, but let's say we were to give you, we were to grant you a twelve-foot variance or a ten-foot variance? How many spots, and I'm assuming that if it was half that, and you're adding twenty-six in there, maybe you can get thirteen more in there? You're the engineer, man.
Well, I, I had our, so these parking spaces here, sorry, this whole row here is compact, without disturbing the upland review area further. I will probably, you know, these are eight, these are sixteen feet deep. I'd lose, probably most of the parking I would lose.
If it was that, but you could, if it was half that or a smaller variance, you could still get some additional parking in there, maybe not twenty, it's twenty-five or twenty-six?
Twenty-six is what we're...
Yeah, twenty-six.
I think so, too.
What's that?
I think he loses his whole, the whole bottom section.
You can't fit a parking.
So, we already have a variance for this, which we, I think it was a seventeen-foot variance, and that was just enough to give us the depth of the parking spaces and the width of the twenty-six aisle. So, by, you're saying, twelve feet, so you're adding only five feet, if you lose, you'll lose this, all the poles parking that we're looking for today.
Um, yeah, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You just don't have the depth for this, for the parking spaces. And, you know, and we minimize it by doing compact, so that we could fit it in without...
And there's no way to rearrange anything on the eastern part of the property, so that you could gain a little bit more?
No, because, so the wetland line comes right here, so we're almost, you know, at the wetland line, and then this area, we're just trying to avoid a little bit, we had...
The east side towards the river, I mean, coming back that way?
This way?
Uh, coming back towards the river, behind you.
This way?
Yeah, so, more south, the east side is to the right.
So, this is the edge of the wetlands?
Okay.
So, we are, you know, already as close to the wetland as we can without actually disturbing the wetland.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, you recognize, you were recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions for the applicant, if you don't mind. So, what, you said that we've, you've gotten wetlands approval for this modification?
We have not gone to wetlands yet for this modification.
Because you need to get zoning board appeals, right?
Because what they did last time, they had us come here to get the variance and then go back to get approval of the parking. So, we'd have to go back to wetlands and zoning commission as well, to get some parking spaces.
Okay, and then, with regard to the conservation area and the endangered species?
Yeah.
Of plants that are there, would this, would this parking area require blasting?
No.
This, the drawing that shows this conservation, has that been reduced from previous, you know, conversations about the, you know, the sensitive plants that are on there? I mean, has that, has the conservation area that's indicated here changed?
No.
Been reduced at all?
No.
So, this, this wire fence, is it a wire fence or a wood fence that you have marked there? That is the existing fence that's there now?
Well, this is the conservation area that is over here.
Right.
That has not changed.
Not changed.
That fence has always, that fence was put there to...
Right, so that is the existing fence that I have been, I have actually been up there, and I've seen that fence, and that's...
I think they put a chain link fence up there for now, which will be a nicer fence once we're finished.
Right, okay, so there's, there's no change to that?
Yeah.
And then, these stones will be added there? This, it says there's a proposed rock cut slope.
Where, uh, behind the parking, this parking lot down here?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm...
So, that, that will be, this hasn't changed from what got originally approved.
Okay.
But that is, so this, where this endangered plant is, is grows a ledge, so the intent is to basically cut back the ledge, so I put a, like a rock symbol, so that's where the edge of the ledge would be.
Okay. But so there, so you will have to cut back the ledge?
Uh, down here, I thought you meant over here.
No.
No.
Perhaps not with blasting, but with drilling, or what is what I call a hammering?
Yeah.
So, so you'll be removing some of the ledge on which the plant grows?
Where the plant grows is the conservation area. It's, it's north-facing, it all has to do with the sun, and so we, this is the protected area.
And I guess that will be a matter that the Wetlands Commission will take up anyway, correct?
I believe it's already been took up, I don't think it's before, it was before your time.
Yeah, it was before me, but...
Because we worked with, I think, Alice at the time, to, I can't remember who was taking over the maintenance and the protecting of that, that conservation area.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. I have one quick follow-up question.
Sure.
So, this right here, I'm not a wetlands expert, but is any of the, this is, that's that telephone pole I was speaking of before. So, you're gonna be right behind that. Is any of this area in here wetlands or protected area?
It's part of the...
Between the pole and there?
It's part of the upland review area.
So, would that be something that would have to go through wetlands?
We will have to go back to wetlands for the approval of these parking spaces.
But you're asking us for a variance that possibly may not get through wetlands?
Well, when we originally went through wetlands, so this parking area, we had it closer to the thing, they had asked us to push it back, and we came to you for that variance. Where we, so we were not, we still have the twenty-five feet, we had, I think, seventeen feet. That was on the request of them to get that variance. So, I don't see this as being an issue, since we're still, we're still keeping the spirit of the ripraring buffer.
I understand, and it just seems like it's in reverse order, because let's say, for some reason, we granted a variance, which stays on land in perpetuity, and they're like, no, we don't like it, it's wetlands, you can't do that over here, and then we put something on the property forever that didn't need to be there.
Well...
What if the wetland says no?
We can't build it.
It doesn't matter who's there.
Yeah, but it's still gonna have a variance there, we don't know what it's gonna have, putting a variance on something.
The variance can be there, but if wetland says you can't build anything there, then nobody, it doesn't matter who owns that property.
The variance is on parking, right?
Exactly, our thing is about...
Can't build something, it's parking.
Yeah, it's just for parking, yes.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Any further questions? Okay, this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application? Hearing none.
Well, I did that.
Oh?
That was me.
Yeah, you're done. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Yes, sir? Please stand, state your name and address for the record, and Mark Fasarka, two hundred Candle Lake Road. You have the floor, sir. Brookfield, Connecticut. You know, I'm watching this, and I'm saying, man, it feels like a lot like it was the Four Corners. You know, let's build this, this is gonna be great, I went to some of those meetings, oh, we got parking everywhere. That's a debacle. That got screwed up by the town, by the zoning, whoever approved all that, it is not working. Are there apartments gonna be in this building? Yes. You may answer. So, hypothetically, you put all these apartments in there, and you get all the apartments, but then the real retail stores all bomb the hell out, right? Now you have ugly-looking buildings in these places. This is very convoluted for this town right now. They're going from here to there to there to here. I know you're developers, Scialzo, a lot of them, and you do good work. You should have known there's wetlands there. You should have known, because poor planning on your part does not necessitate a variance on theirs. And you should have known about this way before that, and that whole corridor there is just blown out from the seams. Seems, I don't know if the infrastructure's gonna be able to handle this, I hope the town's looking at that. The sewer plants and everything that needs to be done with that, and the water supplies, et cetera, all the traffic. This town is just getting so overgrown and so crazy. Now, when you put those extra parking spots in there, how are you gonna know which ones are delineated specifically for Still River? And furthermore, how do you know people who are shopping and/or guests of the people living there are not using those parking spaces? Are you gonna have a meter that says your time's up, get the hell out of here? These are the things that always start to happen in towns. You need to look at now, six months, a year, five years, and ten years for this. And just, it seems like it's backwards. I think they need to go right back to the drawing board. I think it's gonna look like a total freaking debacle as you go down Federal Road over there, having this three-story building over there. You look at the Four Corners and the buildings they put in the back, it's a disaster. That area cannot even house the amount of people that are there. We do not need an extra hundred and eighty-something cars coming in and out of that place, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It is, just seems like it's not as professional as it should be, and of course, you're gonna agree it goes with the planning, et cetera, of the town. You're getting paid to say that. I don't think it does, I think it's gonna be a disaster, and that's just my opinion. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none. Does anybody have, um, yeah, we're in closing, ma'am, you have the foreclosing remarks.
I just want to say that the apartments and the retail are all approved. You know, the parking beside the twenty-six spaces is all approved. We've done traffic studies, we're almost, you know, dealing with the DOT, getting the light approved. I do believe it's in spirit with what the TCD regulations, you know, are meant for, you know, to bring pedestrians, you know, that's what the grocery store is. This is all part of the walkway pedestrian friendly, and I think, and I think it will work nice, you know, of course, it looks terrible now, it's under construction. I think the final product will be an asset to the town, the Four Corners.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay. This time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing. Z dash twenty-three, that's ready. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda, is application Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-one. That is twenty Station Road in Brookfield, landowner of record is Mr. Edward McCarty, and the applicant slash agent, I believe, is Mr. Alan Rothman. Okay, I know you're gonna explain it in detail, but the variance request is to basically change and make one hundred percent residential, correct me if I'm wrong, sir?
Correct.
And to go to nineteen thousand square foot footprint. It's on three floors, so that would be seven thousand five hundred square feet per floor, is that correct, ma'am?
We, uh, it varies slightly from that, because we want to put some living space in the fourth floor to match the other buildings.
Yeah, and that's the next thing I was gonna say, partial fourth floor and some living space. Please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Alan Rothman. I work for Brookfield Station, Brookfield Village Station Road LLC, for Ten Julia Lane, Cold Spring, New York. I'm also here with Earl Govan, he's our landscape architect.
Blades and Govan, Earl Govan?
Govan, this is Govan.
Blades and Govan, offices in Fairfield, Connecticut.
So, this property is twenty Station Road, we are in contract to buy it, we don't own the property. We, it's a contaminated lot. Town did get, with our, as a partnership with the developer, one point two million dollar grant to clean up the lot. The requirement requires us to do certain things, like build at least fifty-four residential units. We have to, we have to bring it to fruition, otherwise, we have to pay back the one point two million dollars, and it's gotta be financially viable. We, anything that goes over the one point two million is our responsibility, it's to, for the cleanup. Cleanups are tricky, they can easily go over one point two, but, so this is a risky project. So, to make it work viably, we need to do these three, get these three variances. So, the first variance is, is the relief from the commercial space. We already have in Brookfield Village, seven thousand square feet or so of unrented space that's been on the market for years. So, we don't wanna add any more commercial space. We're all gonna, in phase three, we are gonna put another four thousand square feet, exactly four thousand sixty-five square feet on the market for commercial.
Which is across the street from this one.
Right. And so, we don't wanna have where there's more empty commercial space, it makes a risky project even more risky. Second, variance we're requesting is the footprint be larger. So, it is a large, the twelve thousand is the zoning requirement.
Max for TCD, sir.
For max, TCD, right. So, this is nineteen thousand five hundred. Um, but when you look at the building, you're seeing one side or another, so it doesn't look that big. Uh, but this is a tricky lot. It's got about, um, three quarters of it is, is wetlands. Um, it also has two very, um, um, difficult easements we have to get through. One's, um, one's an emergency access easement and others are sewer easements, um, for neighboring properties. It's not for this property. And, um, and so that, so that's why we need to make it one building. Because we really don't have any other land to move it, to let's say divide it, because then we're gonna interfere with the wetlands. Third is the fourth floor. Fourth floor just be a partial floor. There would be no elevator stop to the fourth floor. It's just the third floor apartments to be larger, so with an upstairs. And we have that, this board has agreed to that in, in the last four buildings we've, we've got approved.
Just utilizing the space underneath the roof.
It's basically using the attic space.
As a loft space for the upstairs units.
Right.
So to give you a little history, um, we have Earl Govan, again, um, we went through wetlands and got approval for this plan, and prior to that, we had looked at a number of plans. First of which was a two-building plan, which would meet your requirements of 120, uh, uh, 12,000 square foot for building. When we did that, we had much more impact on the wetlands. So, uh, this plan represents a net zero decrease in wetlands. We're actually going in and remediating a portion of the wetlands for the, remediate those hazardous materials. And in doing so, we're reorganizing the wetlands to allow us to park in some areas and then create wetlands in areas that we don't have them. So we're trading off, fixing areas, trading off, and actually have an increase, a slight increase in wetlands from pre and post-construction. Um, in, in addition, the town has asked us to provide some parking spaces, um, to alleviate maybe some of the issues that have been brought up earlier. Um, and in doing so, by removing the retail space, it allows us to add, uh, 11 to 15 or so additional spaces because we don't need as many for residential as we would for commercial on this site that could be used for other sites across the street and, and around the corner. So we're providing, uh, the town with parking spaces. We're providing, we have, uh, got a wetland approval for a no net loss in, or in, um, in wetlands while, while, um, remediating the contaminated material and providing a residential community within the area that's left to us, which is about an acre and a half or so. Um, so we're, you know, we've kinda shoehorned in, and we also have a major, uh, easement that runs right along here, which kinda shoehorns where the building can be. So we end up with a, we need to have a viable pro, uh, product that can sustain any additional cost to the remediation over and above the 1.2 million, which is, uh, I think the major reason why the commercial space doesn't make a lot of space is that it's not viable to the developer. So in order to make the project viable, they need to get space that can be rented in order to, in case these numbers, say that number goes to 3 million, he's on the hook for 1.7 million. Right, so, and, and those things do tend to get larger than smaller, right? And they're not gonna get smaller. So that's really the, how we got to this point. Um, and again, we do have wetland approval. It wasn't that, that was not easy. Um, it was, uh, an arduous task, but it is a private partnership with this, with the town, uh, the village, and, um, you know, we, we feel that, um, as, as the developers represented, that this project worked for us. Looking at other alternatives, it starts to get very, very narrow in terms of making sense. We don't own it yet, uh, as the, as the team. We're contracted for it as long as we get through the process.
And one other thing, we're not looking for a zoning variance on height. This would be the same height or smaller.
42 feet or less?
Yes, would be 42 feet or less and less than the other height of the other building slightly.
And is in character with all the other buildings across the street. Balconies, all those same styles are, are being carried through to this site.
Thank you very, very much, ma'am. Do we have any questions?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. This is from, um, Ed McCarthy.
He just gave permission for us and for you guys to walk the land.
Yes, that's okay, then I have to read.
Oh, fine, fine, sorry.
And it's, um, Dear Land Use Department, Brookfield Zoning Board of Appeals and Brookfield Zoning Commission, and it's dated May 15th, May 15th, 2023. Brookfield Village Station Road LLC and Alan Rothman of Brookfield Village Station Road LLC have my permission to apply for zoning variances with the Brookfield ZBA and to apply with the Brookfield Zoning Commission for their planned use of the property at 20 Station Road, Brookfield, Connecticut. The necessary committee, board members, and land use officials also have my permission to walk the property as necessary. And it is sincerely Ed McCarthy, owner of 20 Station Road, Brookfield, Connecticut.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners or all that have any questions. If anybody has any questions, please feel free, right, commissioners?
Could you describe the current, um, look and feel of the property today?
Um, it's garbage land. They tried to, um, uh, about 20 years ago, they tried to mitigate it. They dug down about two feet, but it needs to go down 20 feet plus. Chemicals need to go into the bedrock. It's a very big contaminated site.
So it's currently a residential style structure to one and a half stories. The rear part of it is, uh, where the chemicals were typically dumped out the back. Um, they ended up being centralized in, uh, maybe a 15 to 20-foot depth of, um, of contamination that kinda followed the rock that's there. So it spread out, it, we, there's other contamination, but most of it's like road contamination. Um, salt, silt, sand, and, and such that came off the roads because they were, they dug ditches. It's dilapidated. It is, uh, it's a blight site.
Nobody will lock down the building because.
Of the contamination.
Because the building has contaminants in it, and, um, so it's not just taking a bulldozer. You gotta go through the state to actually remediate it first and then take it down.
But it is a dilapidated site. I believe it's been cited.
It's boarded up. It's, it took lights.
And it's a, it's across the street from the new development and across the street from the, uh, there is a shop on that corner, um, next, next to the car wash.
Yes. So it has, um, over $100,000 in blight fines on the property. And so the town will get that when we close on the property.
When does it advance?
Uh, um, this, this, all I can tell you is the pollution goes back for decades, many decades. And so what's so bad about it is, so this, this, um, chemical is now turning into another chemical that causes Parkinson's. So not only you got the cancer issue, but now you, and that's only, um, a possibility, but the Parkinson's is actually connected to the cause. So it's really.
The contaminants that are found in that, in the soil.
It's converting into TCE as they decay. They don't decay overnight, but this has been decades.
What about the, um, the sewers? What, I mean, what kind of capital that have? I mean, we're.
The number of units is.
Okay, so.
Please go over the number.
Units are roughly 60.
61.
Um, well, we're still working on that.
It's somewhere between 54 and 61, 58 now?
Between 58 and 61. It'll probably be lower, 60 or lower. Again, CEO's getting 61.
And it's approximately 150 gallons per person.
Right, it's roughly 12,000 to 15,000 gallons per day.
What's the millions in a year?
What's the what?
The millions in a year. So if you're at 61, 150 per, you got two people at least per one.
Yeah.
You don't have that number. It's okay.
It's, well, it's gonna be, well, I'd have to get an engineer to calculate it out, but it's gonna be 12,000 to 15,000 gallons per, per day. Uh, 15, 12, 12,000 gallons per day. So, um, so that's not gonna be, that's in the big scheme of things, it's pretty small. But that would be the WPCA will determine whether we're successful at that or not.
Which we still have to go do with it.
Right, we've been in front of them once, um, and they, they recommend to this more, but it sounds like they're gonna add 200,000 gallons a day pretty, pretty soon, soon.
Uh, Mr. Roth, may I have a question for you, sir? Um, earlier in your, in your opening statement, you said that you were under contract or had a letter of some kind of contract with the.
We were in a big contract.
Do you have a copy of that with you, sir?
No.
Why not?
Why not? Because, um, um, actually, um, it was part of the application's public information, I believe.
Correct? Was that part of the application?
Did you grant the application?
Yeah.
Yes. My next question, sir. Okay, this is the application that you have in front of us. Is this your signature?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you signed as the owner, but you're technically not the owner of the property.
Um.
What is, what is your exact?
Okay, with the contract bendee.
Contract bendee. I know you have a real estate license in New York.
What's your point here?
Let me finish, ma'am. So were you designated as the?
In the contract, I have permission to go in front of boards, in a contract with Ed McCarty.
Okay, you're talking on that letter?
No, not for, well, the letter helps, but, but in.
With the city and the state.
So you, was that, what, what was that document? Was it the application?
So this is the ZBA application that's before us right here and right now, where it says owner's signature. You signed as the owner, but technically you're not the owner. I asked you, you said, you stated you were, you were under contract with Mr. McCarty.
Yes.
But you do not have a copy of that for the zoning board of appeals to that, for evidence, sir?
Okay, correct.
Okay.
Um.
It's all right.
Okay, was the probate court that, um, our court, I was, I was, Ed McCarty at the time of the contract was, had a conservator. So it was court of, um, court review contract.
But as I understand it, there's no conservator anymore. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. McCarty is technically the legal landowner.
Correct.
Which, by the way, I verified with the land records office. He is the technical landowner of the property.
Correct.
And the reason why I bring that up is because, um, you don't know me very well, but I always go out and look at every single solitary property. If you read the ZBA bylaws, we're encouraged here, some of us can, some of us can't, but we're encouraged to go out and look at properties. And I've, one of the things it says in the ZBA bylaws is you have to call and ask and request permission from the landlord to go out and look at the property. And I called 100 of them, and every one of them has been gracious and allowed me to go out there. I did call this landowner. Now, that leads to my next question. The letter that you sent us, sir, it's dated from Mr. McCarty. It's dated on the 15th of May.
Correct.
This application was filled out on the 17th of May.
Yes.
But that email that has Mr. McCarty's signature on it did not arrive until the day after Memorial Day, which is the 31st.
Correct, all correct.
So there's 16 days there.
Yes.
If you did this on the 17th, why didn't you just turn it in there?
I didn't have it. His lawyer gave it to Ed on the 15th.
Okay, but you didn't have it to turn in on this, on two days later, on the 17th?
Correct, I did not.
It took 16 days to get that?
It probably took a little less than that, but it did take a little time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that right now. So what I'm saying is, so we got our package, we got our information. So I did not have that letter in front of me, and I called the actual landlord. And I'm gonna read it because it's important to read it in the record, exactly what he said to me.
Just, so I, while you're looking.
Yes, sir.
Ed McCarty is very, very difficult. They could have, they knew that pollution was occurring, and he still did that. It still had, um, he's just been a very difficult person to work with.
I understand.
His lawyer is not difficult.
So on, uh, we, we got our package. This is on the 19th, okay, when I called Mr. McCarty. It was 9:05 AM in the morning, um, and this was just call and ask permission to go out and walk the site in the driveway. And it was a startling conversation, and I also had a prior conversation with him as well. But this, this conversation, and that was on the other application that was in front of us, and I didn't have it. Anyways, I called Mr. McCarty on the phone, uh, to ask permission to walk the property in regards to this application. He stated the following, and it was, I wrote it down verbatim. He knows nothing about this application. He recalled our previous conversation from back in April, April 22nd. He said that I didn't. Also stated he never approved, signed on any application and wants it invalidated. That's his words, not mine. I wrote it down. Also, he asked to verify the phone number to the land use office, and I gave him the number, which was 775-7316. And I said, please ask for Amy, Fran, or Rochelle, and he wanted me to pass this info on to him. And he maintained that he also wanted to speak to his wife Kathleen, uh, again, and said she had just left the house. That was, uh, and Mr. McCarty did not give me permission to walk the property. And the reason why I bring this up to you, sir, is because on the other one, which is relevant now with this, and it was startling, but there was the first phone call that I had with him, okay? It was the same thing. We didn't have anything, any letter in writing. It was the first older application. I was calling to ask permission to go out there, and this is exactly what he said to me. So this is April 22nd, 23, and the gentleman picked up on this second phone call. On Saturday, 1:09 PM, I called the property owner, Mr. Edward McCarty. This is April 22nd, 2023. Introduced myself, asked his permission to walk through the property at 20 Station Road in regards to, at that time, it was the ZBA application. I said his ZBA application. He said, what application? I explained the application briefly. He said he never authorized any application. He explained that he was ill for a while, but he's doing much better now. He further stated that he and his wife told Mr. Rothman that they did not agree with what he proposed to do with the property and asked me for the phone number and who to talk to in the land use office. And I gave him the main phone number and I said, please speak to Amy, Fran, or Rochelle. He did not give me permission to walk his property. This is why I bring this up.
Okay, so let me respond to that.
Yes, sir.
So I, I mentioned, I heard from the land use office that you, you were told you couldn't walk the property. So I talked to John Larry, his attorney, and as John Larry says, we'll get it. Sometimes he is not with it, and sometimes he is. So we're gonna wait till he's with it, and then we can get him to sign this letter.
But you're not a doctor. You, you can't make that determination. The attorney's not a doctor.
I've never met it. I'm talking to his lawyer.
I understand that, sir. I understand that, sir.
And that's what I heard from his lawyer.
Okay. Next question. You had a, um, you were both at the inland wetlands meeting. You had two different meetings with them. I just wanted to go over a couple of things that were discussed at the inland wetlands meeting. All right. At the first inland wetlands meeting, I believe that was on, let's get it in front of me. It's 1:00 March 27th, that's March 27th.
Now, yeah, just to bring up, I think, maybe the, the property ownership?
Yes, sir.
This is a result of an RFP by the town that was put out.
This town?
No, this is, this, the town, the town put out an RFP for a developer, so we responded.
For this property?
That's what he means.
But the legal owner of the property is Mr. Edward McCarty?
Oh, absolutely.
Just so you know.
Absolutely, yeah, no, no.
The land records office, I verify that, and I have a copy of the records. Okay.
Yes.
All right, so going to, my question's on the inland wetlands meeting, which I believe that both of you were at. For some reason, there's no video on it, so it's just audio. So I had to listen to the audio on it, and guess who was talking? All right. Uh, a couple of quick questions. At 1:17 minutes and 35 seconds, this is Chairwoman Fox. She said, I will tell you, I don't think it's adequate. Man, I'm talking about the wetlands portion before you came to us here today. I don't think it's adequate. It's missing some of the things you were talking about. Uh, I don't know what this is, modiology, grades, and profile. I think you need more in terms of wetlands creation, and then I may know, this is her saying that, the chairwoman. Then I may know, this whole thing goes away if you can find a way to make the building footprint smaller and you can drop about 20 spaces. Does that sound kinda sorta, do you remember that conversation about it?
Okay, I don't know, but they voted for favor and nobody voted against.
Correct. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to my point in a second.
Okay.
The next part of this. Um, the wetlands creation business goes away. You can say, I can't, I will tell you. This is prior to any vote, by the way, because you went in front of them two times. So this is the first.
We actually went in front of them three times.
Thank you. This is the 13th, so that's, that's the second meeting?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Um, she was talking about finances and things like that. Um, you guys were going back and forth and say, um, they were discussing finances, and she said, hey, you know, a lot of people say, okay, it's finances this, it's finances that, we tell them to go take a look at it. That's just so, so that you don't have to destroy any wetlands and stuff like that. And she said that you always, developers, always seem to find a way to do it without having to destroy any wetlands. My question to you is, on this, did you absolutely 100% have to destroy wetlands?
Yes. We have 7,000 square feet of the contaminated wetlands.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to. You know what? The number might be, it might be 4,700. I'm not quite sure. There is a spot right here that is, that is considered contaminated and needs to be remediated, which is in the middle of the area that we're utilizing. which is in the middle of the area that we're util, you know, that we are disturbing. So, we're actually creating more wetlands that are there now, when we're done. But we have to remediate, and we have to impact, I think it's forty-seven hundred square feet, I'm not quite sure exactly the number anymore. Ten thousand. So, it's ten thousand square feet of that, and it's shown on that plan that you guys have in your file, which is here.
I looked at that.
That has to be remediated.
My question, now that I recognize your voice, because I was listening to the inland wetlands meeting.
Yes.
Um, at the prior meeting, the thirteenth meeting, you had one thought on what the amount of contamination was, but then you, I think it was you speaking.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I couldn't see the video on it. But then you said, you know what, we realize that, I have your exact words here, but now that you took a little bit better look at it, it's not quite as bad as you thought. You thought there were some hotspots.
Right.
You said inside the building where, I'm going by memory here, uh, because I listened to it a week ago. But you said inside the building, there was the hotspots where the chemicals was spilled, you said something about an oil tank outside.
Yeah.
Right, and then you said the road runoff.
Yes.
Which is not the property owners or anybody else's fault.
Well, they, well, they, they developed, they, they cut swales through their property, which allowed the road runoff to get into the back of the property.
But road runoff caused it, it's not like a chemical dump from a.
Correct, so, to be, to, to clarify, between those two meetings, I had a conversation with the hazardous material engineer. And he described to me exactly what needed to be done. So, what we did for wetlands was, we went through an analysis of exactly how we needed to remediate, and how much, why we needed to disturb these areas during the remediation, and that where we would put them back afterwards. So, in, in being so, here's your hotspot, here's your oil tank, and here's your flow of bad stuff that runs over and, and has impacted. This stuff is only two to three, maximum three feet deep. What I was saying was, originally, I thought the hotspot was in here that had to go down ten feet.
Right, I remember hearing that.
That's not the case. This is only a two to three foot remediation, this could be a fifteen foot remediation. So, that, so, between those two meetings, I had a conversation with the engineer who developed the plan, and he described to me what needed to be done, so we could speak more intelligently at that meeting.
Great, I did not hear the oldest, oldest meeting, I only heard the one on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. But I noticed that from, it must have been from the prior meeting, because you said, oh, it's not quite as bad as we thought it was. And then again, when you went to the meeting on the twenty-seventh, um, I guess you had to shrink the amount of the wetlands that you had to disturb or whatever on there. And Chairwoman Fox was trying to figure out why.
I can explain that.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, this lot.
Basically, it wasn't as bad as they thought.
Yeah, so.
There's a reasoning behind it.
So, here, we were gonna go in and replace, we were gonna go in and redo the entire wetland area and create, start from scratch. We got pushed back. So, there are these two areas that are just outside the wetlands that we can't get to unless we do that. So, we don't have as much wetland addition and disturbance because we're no longer, we're no longer impacting this whole area. Right, originally, we were gonna impact the whole wetland, we're gonna rebuild it from scratch to make it a viable wetland. It isn't all that viable right now. It's, it's, it's.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say to Mr. Chairman that this is not wetlands commission. They have done their job, I think it's us to do our job, which is about.
I have pretty much two final questions.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, could you please describe in detail the exact, exact hardships that are in place? I, I saw them, but as I look at them, and I read them, and I spent a lot of time on this before I came here, as you tell. But the biggest, biggest chunk of this seems to be financial based.
Biggest chunk is contamination.
Well, I disagree, because when I heard you in the meeting, at the beginning of the other meeting, you said point blank to the chairwoman there, look, if we can't get it to this side, we don't want to have anything to do with it. I'm, I'm just almost quoting you, but that's, do you remember saying that to her? We don't want anything to do with it, if we can't have it this side, it's not financially viable, we, we just won't have anything to do with it. Do you remember saying that?
But the bigger goal, yes, but the bigger goal is, it's a contaminated site. We're taking lots of risk cleaning the site up.
Right.
And to do that, we need a financial reward.
Right, and I, and I totally respect that, sir, I respect that.
Well, it sounds like the hardship is contamination, because the hard, contamination sets the financial terms of the property. So, it's not a financial issue.
Right, and for anybody to go ahead and do something with this, they have to take into consideration, uh, as a major issue, its contamination.
And obviously, it's not a hardship just for this piece of property, it's a hardship for the town that there's this contaminated, uh, blighted area sitting there that needs, needs to be remediated, so.
Thank you very much. And the fact that the, the developable area is minimized by the wetlands, which we are, again, no net loss in wetlands. So, we're maintaining the, the philosophy of the, the wetland, the commission. Uh, we're limited to the area that we have to develop, and we have to maximize that in order to make, so there's your financial. You have to maximize that in order to make the project viable for both the town and for the developer.
Would you understand perfectly what you're getting into before you get into it, is that correct?
Um, no, because there's risk we're taking. They could, the cost can be over one point two million dollars, and we have to absorb that.
But you know the property, you know the size, you know, kind of, sort of, the contamination part of it.
I think they, I really feel that there is a risk here.
And they're taking it.
We don't know how much the contamination is.
Given, given the approval, they'll take the risk. Without the approval, we, we having trouble with the risk.
I, I understand, I think so.
Last question for you, Mr. Rothman. If for some reason, I'm not saying if you have an approval today, it may not be approved, but if for some reason it wasn't approved, you could still, and would you be willing to go through and build the property not at the extra seven thousand five hundred square foot before, and the extra fourth floor?
Um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be successful because the DECD requires a certain number of apartments, it requires it be financially viable. The, the DECD is putting this money up to, to, for economic development, and they want tax revenue for the town and the state. So, that would not be successful, we would, we would not get the grant.
So, for some reason, you did not, or could not get the variance today, you would not go through and then build it at a smaller, you wouldn't?
The smaller would not work, because we wouldn't meet the requirements, the conditions of the DECD, of the grant, and financially, it wouldn't make sense.
Which is a minimum of fifty-four units?
Minimum is fifty-four units.
Up to sixty-one or something like that?
Right, but, um, I, as I said before, sixty-one is extremely unlikely, we just can't fit sixty-one.
So, you need a variance from us, or it was?
Right.
You wouldn't go through with it?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Do you have any other questions? I think I have one tiny little question, if you don't mind. At that same meeting, uh, this is the inland wetlands meeting, sir. This is the one I'm referring to. At, and our land use director, Ms. Hodges, in one hour forty-four minutes and twenty-four seconds, our land use director, Ms. Hodges, asked her, if you still don't get a ZBA approval, are you still going forward? And you responded, yes, sir.
Well, we've done much more analysis on this project since, I, um, I was assuming that, that we wouldn't have as required even a fourth floor. I thought we'd be able to fit enough apartments, but since then, we've hired an architect, and the architect described that we need all these, these variances.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Anybody else have any further questions? Or do you have any, um, correspondence, any advice, as a matter of fact? Anything last minute? At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this application. Ms. Hodges, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, I'm the, uh, I'm the land use director for the town of Brookfield. My last hurrah, won't see you again, but, um, I have, you know, been involved in this project since, you know, since the idea came up, and the grant application was itself, you know, quite extensive, to say the least. Somebody moved parts, um, you've heard in, in the wetlands, it took three meetings, people come on, meaning, um, uh, look, I think that there is a financial component to this, but I think that's, um, you know, anyone willing to take this kind of risk and to, you know, finally get this site, um, root, you know, deserves some possibility of, um, you know, financial success. Uh, I don't think it's gonna be a huge moneymaker, although I'm certainly no one, you know, no one to weigh down that. It's not, it's my personal opinion, and no, no factual basis, and no idea. But, um, I can tell you that, um, uh, I think this, this project would benefit the town greatly, because everyone knows this site, it's ugly because of life that's sitting there, and really, I don't see any other, um, you know, possible solutions to this. There had been some other ideas floated, like to pave the thing, because that's one way to get rid of the problem, but then to even take down the, um, the building itself, as Mr. Rothman testified, what, you know, is, is, um, a problem in and of itself. And so, the town couldn't, can't even afford to do that. So, um, I, you know, having seen, having seen this project, um, from, from, you know, beginnings, or I guess, at least a year ago, possibly, a little bit more than that, um, you know, I really think that this would be a viable advantage to the town, and I think the hardships are, as Mr. Rothman said, you know, created primarily by the fact that it's contaminated brownfield, and no one wants to touch it.
Can I add one thing to what Michelle said? Am I allowed to?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. So, um, one, one thing she sort of implied is, the town could build their parking lot. The problem with that is, you don't get the one point two million dollar grant from the DECD. It's gotta be, um, economic development, so, um, a parking lot in itself would not be successful.
Where is the parking?
Where is the parking now, on your design, she's asking?
Okay, the parking is all, all here.
Okay.
It's one hundred and one parking spaces.
The north and the east side of the property, where's, which, where's station?
Station Road is down here.
It's the north end.
Goes here, rolling alley is here.
Right, right, okay.
Wait there, sir, do you have the exact, actually, I should probably ask the government if we're following up on. Do you have the exact scientific data on the actual pollution there?
Uh, I don't, but it's available. Uh, I think there's been a preliminary testing, uh, by, by.
We do not have it in our package.
Files, we've, this many files.
Okay, it's all right.
The town did, they did testing, not us.
The initial testing was done, but.
Can you put it on CD?
There was about five.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Sure, I can do anything for you.
No, we trust you.
So, you understand.
You're doing your job, and we trust you.
The town did a few studies, uh, at least, at least one, I don't know, but they hired, they got a grant, they did a study. Then, they, they found this, all the pollution, they came, they then put out an RFP for, to, how do you get a developer to actually develop the property? So, we could do this and get this joint grant of one point two million dollars.
Thank you very much.
Now, I ask you, Mr. Rothman, um, if I may, and I don't know if I'm even allowed to ask you. Why is the owner, does the owner know the contamination on his land?
Well, twenty years ago, they, they did.
Did he own this, uh, years?
As far as I know, yes, I think so, I'm not positive. Uh, but I know somebody in the late nineties did some, they actually destroyed the wetlands, but they took out the top two or three feet. Um, and cart, um, I don't even know, they, they might, they actually brought in new soils, but it's only two feet deep, that doesn't do anything. We're gonna go down ten to fifteen feet.
Insurance, depending on the hotspots.
Correct.
So, he's aware of the contamination? Is he aware of the contamination?
I don't know if he, I've never spoken to the guy. I've only talked to his attorney, because I find it very difficult.
I, I have, uh, we have a property near my, in my neighborhood, that's why, too, typically, owners who are, who have a blighted property, have not, uh, view.
They don't care? Okay.
That's why it's blighted, right?
And they don't live in Brookfield, right?
They've left the property, it's abandoned, it's.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody else that would like to speak in favor. Mr. Nebraska, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, I haven't moved, I'm at the same address. So, we talked about parking, this gives us public parking. Why doesn't the town buy the property? The town would never purchase this parcel. The environmental liability is endless. This is the biggest plume in Brookfield. You go to the DECD Brownfield website, and look at plumes in Brookfield, or lists, this is the last untreated Brownfield site in town. The plume is bigger than Twenty Station Road. When this grant became available last fall, I was the one that led the effort to write it with several people in this room and others. The grant required the town redevelop the property. So, you just can't clean it up, leave the vacant lot, the one point two million dollar contingency is, you must redevelop it. So, whatever it takes to get this parcel redeveloped, I'm in favor for. Again, it's gonna give us some more public parking. For the record, Tara Carr signed that grant application, and for the record, Tara Carr and I talked to Ed McCartney's attorney, and he suggested we talk to Kathleen McCartney, Ed's wife, which we did about two weeks ago. And Kathleen said, I'll do whatever I can, I'll do whatever it takes, we're in favor of this, please proceed. This is from Ed's wife, Kathleen. That's all I have to say.
Unfortunately, I did not get her on the phone.
Well, I can give you her phone number if you like.
No.
I called both the phone numbers, and they're on the application, sir.
She, I.
Just bad luck, I guess.
Trust me, it's hard enough, we know it's hard to get a hold of McCartney, that's why we go through their attorney, and it takes time.
It actually wasn't, we picked up both times on the phone.
Okay, well, good for you, but I, I didn't have that luck. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Okay.
Does anybody have, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Sir, you have the final words. Oh, I didn't do opposition, I thought I did. At this time, yeah, at this time, I would like to ask if there's anybody here to speak in opposition to this application. Yes, sir? Please go forward, state your name and address for the record.
Nick Bartolomeo.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I own a property, uh, Twenty Seventh Station Road, I'm, uh, in fact, right across the street. Uh, I didn't see the plan, I'm here just, uh, I have a little concern regarding the, the parking, and, uh, the amount of people are moving in a small, if, if you look at the whole area there, it's probably six, seven acres, okay? You said that, uh, you're gonna have a minimum of fifty-four apartment, correct?
Yes, actually, it's gonna be fifty-eight to sixty-one.
Okay, uh, and you said there is under.
Questions have to be through the chair, sir, I'm sorry. I'll ask them for you, though, I swear.
Uh, and there is, uh, under, uh, one parking spots?
It's one point five, the zoning requires one point five per apartment, so that would be for sixty, that would be ninety parking spaces.
Most, most of the apartments are filled with, uh, two, three people, okay? And I don't see anybody here that doesn't have a car, okay? So, if there is a sixty apartment, that, that's under twenty space, under twenty space, that's gonna force people to, to move in other people's property, and the park, and park in the street. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is a safety issue, okay? The one point two million dollars is paid by you, me, and everybody else in here from the state. Yeah, there is some risk, uh, and I, I can, I can see his point, he's gonna maximize the space with more apartments, so he can have his returns. These are all rental space, people move in, move out. People that don't own the property, when they move into rental space, they bring other people, they having parties, there is a crowds. So, these are all concerned that I see, and I'm surprised that none of you in here, because it's already approved, other three buildings or four buildings on the same, same area. I don't, I don't know why nobody sees this. I understand the property is contaminated, uh, the guys was pushing all the chemicals in the septic. So, and that's one of the reasons why everybody has a city war now. Before, everybody was on well. So.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, can I respond to that?
You can.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, we have, this, this calls for excess parking, more than required. As for, um, uh, the chemicals, the chemicals, their system, I, I don't even know if this is important, but their system wasn't, maybe they were putting down the septic. But they had a system where this, they, it just, it started in the sixties, and they weren't very, very. very careful. It's simple as that.
You're talking about the old dry cleaners.
Right, right.
Yes, sir.
Um, so, as for, you, you've never had an issue with people parking in front of your lot, correct?
Oh, I do. Matter of fact, uh, a lot of time, uh, the trucks will come and deliver stuff.
Okay, but that's construction.
Construction.
Construction we have.
They're still, they're still coming, uh, there is less people than, uh.
The question should be coming through you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. Any given day, just so you guys know, every given day, we have 60 construction people working there. That's temporary. And trucks, yes, they're delivering, uh, materials. They have a lot of materials being delivered, that's temporary.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, sir?
Right now, they, they have 60 people, uh, come and work there, and they live on the end of the day. Now, can you imagine when they're gonna be under 20 people, under 50 people, and they're gonna stay there?
Do you mind pointing out your house for me, sir? Just, yeah, that, that's 20 Station Road right there.
Yeah, what's the business?
I have this building here, and I have the house on the corner.
Okay, right here, here and here.
Yeah, right over, full corner.
Yeah, directly across the street, and, and, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir. Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, I don't have.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm gonna have, you're gonna have the closing remarks.
Okay.
Uh, I did have a follow-up question, because we're gonna leave the closing public hearing here for Mr. Nebraska. May I ask you a question, please, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You were at the town meeting, I was at the town meeting, I asked you one particular question there, I just wanted to follow up, I already know the, the answer to it. But I asked you if for some reason, for whatever reason, the town didn't get the grant, the $1.2 million from the state, was there a possibility six months, a year, two years, three years, five years from then, did the town could find a grant in another way? I remember your answer, but I just wanted to hear from your counsel.
We could always apply for a grant. This one we were awarded.
Yep.
If we don't deliver the project that we said we're gonna deliver after the award, we might not be received as favorably, but we would, we would always apply, you just never assured of being a granted, they're very competitive to get, we don't get every one we applied for.
So that's a yes, that's what you gave me with the thing, you said yes, but.
We'll apply, there's no guarantee we'll win the award.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
It also depends on the money the state has to fund grants. They only fund a grant after a pot of money is awarded for a specific thing, like remediation or whatever.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rockman, you have the final word, sir.
Okay, I wanna say one thing about that. So, um, it's a point system. Bridge, uh, Brookfield starts at a disadvantage because there's not a lot of, it's considered a rich town in this state. And so, a Bridgeport already starts with more points, so if someone has the same project in Bridgeport, they're going to more likely be accepted, and so they write them all with point system. Um, as for his comment about parties, we have a management stamp on the premises, so there's no parties going on, or, or they're very controlled. So, the bigger point is, this is a contaminated site, here's a solution to solve that problem, it's consistent with the other properties, the businesses, or our projects in the, in the area, and it, it looks nice. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any kind of questions at all before we close the public hearing on this? Okay. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash 23 dash 31.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Ah, that is unanimous. All right. Want to go right into that, or?
No.
Keep going?
When is this voted on?
Uh, at the end of the evening, sir. You are welcome to stay or contact the Land use Office in the morning.
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see how late we are. We're a little ways off from there.
Deliberations might be extended, too.
Yeah, it's possible, we might have to have a special meeting just to do deliberations. It's, uh, I don't even know what time it is.
Almost 10:00.
Yeah, 10:50.
Come on, 10:00.
All right. You okay? All right. Our, our fifth hearing, application Z dash 23 dash 3, um, that is the Laura Sealy residence, 58 Indian Trail Road, and we have the applicant or anybody.
I'm the applicant, the agent. My name is Chad Neering, I'm the architect for Laura Sealy, 58 Indian Trail Road, and I'm gonna take five minutes of your life.
It's all right.
I'm gonna do this quick. Only five. And there goes 30 seconds. Uh, good evening.
Welcome to the zoning board appeals, Mr. Neil.
Thanks for having me.
Got it.
Uh, quick project description, uh, I'm gonna just briefly read something and then I'll run you through the drawings. Uh, the applicant seeking to relieve, uh, relief to Brookfield zoning regulations for the purpose of constructing new single-family residence in the R15 zone at 58 Indian Trail and Candlewood Lake Club. Uh, beyond the front and right side variances and lot area variance being applied for, the application will comply with all Candlewood Lake Club regulations, Brookfield zoning regulations, Town Brookfield Building Department regulations, state Connecticut building codes. We're asking for a front yard, um, setback reduction from the required 20 feet to six feet, which is a 14-foot variance request. We're also asking for a right side setback reduction from 10 feet to six feet, which is a four-foot variance request. And also lot area where a substandard size lot of 8,000, 80.
Sorry to interrupt you, sir. Um, there, your first floor plan says three feet, but the variance request was four, that. I figured they'd get that reference. What's that?
We're going to the E V's.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, go ahead, sir.
Uh, lot area, we're reducing from a required 15,000 square feet to the 8,008, 88 square feet, which is a 6,912 square foot variance request. We have two hardships. First one is topography. From the front property line and Indian Trail to the rear property line, the property has a 39-foot, nine-inch height difference over 120 feet. If you look at the drawings I just gave out, that is a graph showing two-foot intervals based off of the Town of Brookfield's G I S maps, which also correspond to the spiral elevations provided by Sydney Wrap in your packet. Uh, this is an extremely steep lot, the further we go from the road, it gets more and more dangerous, um, which goes into our second hardship, which is safety. Uh, the location, uh, the proposed garage allows for two cars to be safely parked in the garage. Additionally, a guest car can be parked to the south side of the garage off the street. Uh, the connection between the garage and the main living room allows for a safe passage and change of elevation to eight and a half feet in there. Furthermore, pushing the garage to that north side setback allows for maximum sun exposure so we can melt snow and dry the rain on the exterior stairs.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Uh, the first page in your, uh, pamphlet is the existing survey, uh, so it shows our front pull-off, uh, front retaining wall, and the location of the very small existing house. We're also non-supplying on the north side setback. Our proposal is bringing this front portion, which is the garage, to six feet of the property line. That allows for an 18-foot on the north side of the curb to the edge of the garage, 20 feet on the south side, so a car can safely, uh, transverse the driveway. Indian Trail and most of the Candlewood Lake Club have very substandard roads, school buses, uh, barely can get through, I believe that they're still using vans to pick up the kids. Um, so part of the design was to push the garage, uh, four feet into that north setback to allow for parking area, one spot to the south of the garage, and then a stair to go to the exterior to the front door. The homeowners will ultimately be able to drive into the garage, go through a stair, uh, go into a mudroom area, which then they can walk down eight and a half feet to finish for floor level. By utilizing this strategy, we are trying to create the most safe situation, um.
That's a one-way road, by the way.
That is a one-way road, uh, substandard.
Heading south, I think.
It is heading south, yep. And Candlewood Lake Road is about 90 feet below us, so if a car goes off on the driveway, it will most likely go through the house below into the road.
You don't want that.
So, it's a very, um, challenging site. So then the elevation from the road, we can see the two-car garage, uh, because of that topography, we have the main ridge, which is actually lower than the garage because we're dropping down so much. And then the south elevation, we can see the garage, transition mudroom space, the front door, and then the main body of the house, which is a two-and-a-half-story structure with two decks to ma- maximize the views of the lake. And then from the, uh, the western side, the rear elevation, we have walkout basement, a large slider in the living space on the first floor, and then another, uh, second-floor roof deck for the master bedroom. And then the north elevation shows the garage right off the street, uh, again, come down, and, uh, that ultimately keeps on going down until they.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr., wait, do we have any correspondence, the first thing I should ask?
No, we do not.
Okay. I did speak to Tony Carr, uh, who's the neighbor to the south, who's married to Tara Carr, I spoke to Tara in the hallway.
Yes, sir.
Uh, spoke with Tony last week, and they are on board and, uh, are, didn't have any concerns of.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
It's like a steep topography.
Yeah. It seems pretty visibly, the hardship seems pretty visible.
I only have two quickie questions on this, that was one of them.
Chad, can I see the pictures?
Did you make it to the back?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, so these photos, uh, these I just took.
Yeah, it's a perfect picture.
So, uh, this photo on the left is basically me holding my camera about a foot off of the parking, uh, hairs.
Right. And if people would park on this picture right here, you're basically, this, I don't know, you fit two, maybe squeeze three.
Two on a diagonal. It's, uh, if you try to pull straight in, you're gonna stick it out to the street.
Yeah.
Um, this is a great photo because this is me standing, there's the ridge of the house, uh, that is a crawl space, a one-story with a one-and-a-half-story structure. And then this is, I walked down to the backside of the lot, and this is probably 15 feet below the crawl space. Um, and it keeps on going down. So, very aggressive, I like.
Any further questions? Questions, Tom? Any questions? I'll be quick, they're really easy. Um, okay, why not just make the house or garage or both a little bit smaller and you wouldn't need any variances? That's my first question.
Uh, if we made the garage any smaller, we won't be able to.
Garage or house or, or a combination of the two, why not just make it?
Yeah, so we actually already made some constellations, they'd love to have a four- or five-bedroom house, and right now we're two, maybe a third-bedroom house, uh, and none of the spaces are excessive in size.
The, the, the first variance is structured to the front lot line, that's a 14-foot, required dimension is 20, you want to be six, that's a 14-foot, that's a 70% request and a reduction.
Correct.
The, uh, second is structured to right sideline, it's about a 40% request, and the overall square footage, which you're asking for, which is 6,912 square foot, it's about a 46.66% reduction, but cut it in half.
Yep.
That's what you're asking us for.
Yep, and so one of the things to note on that is that actually just happens in this hashed red area. So we have our front yard where we're going out 14 feet, the north side is only, I think that's 24 feet deep. Uh, the house then steps back and respects the rest of the side yard somehow, so we have tried to minimize it as much as possible.
I'll try to keep this to 30 seconds, but, thank, thank you homeowner very much for allowing me to go out there and look at it.
Absolutely.
So the slope in the back, which you were talking about, I mean, I guesstimated, you're the pro, but probably starts at 45 here and gets to 55 or 65 foot heading downhill, like, kinda sort of, it's steep.
Yeah, overall, we are, we're 120 feet long, 129.
I'm just going rough angles by eyeball.
Yeah.
That's fairly accurate.
Yeah, if you walk to the back of the property, you know exactly what's going on.
One thing that I did notice, because I looked, I actually had to go around twice because it was on one way, and I went back around and missed something, I had to go back around. But most of the other people, kinda, in that neighborhood, at least on the, uh, the lake side, the west side, they all pretty much have that same topography issue, where it's shooting back down towards the lake.
There are two houses on that that do have garages under closer than this proposal.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that has no bearing on this application, um, because it's singularly their, um, property, but that does show that one of the more successful ways to get a garage is not to go down the hill, but to set it as close to the road as possible so that those cars never have a fear of going down.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very, very much. Anybody have any other questions? All right, at this time.
Thanks so much, everybody, you guys have really had a big night.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here to speak in favor of this application.
I'll say anything you like.
Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask.
You don't want to say anything harsh to me.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Sir, you have the closing remarks.
Oh, I know, good.
Thank you very much. All right.
I think we've all heard nothing.
I'd like to take a motion. Uh, anybody have any further questions before we close public hearing? Any further questions? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing for Z dash 23 dash 3.
So moved.
Laura Sealy of 58 Indian Trail Residence, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do you have seconds? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. All right, we're gonna roll into session, we'll take it right.
No, no, I think go.
Let's keep going.
I am working still.
Yeah.
Poor guy.
Sir, we're getting here right now, give me one second, I swear.
Last one, one more.
Okay. Next on the agenda is application Z dash 23 dash 33, Florentio, Florentio Cicada, I hope I don't mess up your name, would you say your last name?
Uh, my name is Rui de Souza, I'm, uh, I represent, uh, Florentio Cicada.
Cicada, okay, thank you very much. 58 Iron Works Hill Road, uh, Brookfield, Connecticut, the applicant is looking to put a 20 by 10 shed, it's approximately 200 square feet. Um, sir, do you have a floor?
So, for the record, my name is Rui de Souza, um, I live at 75 River Ford Road, just representing the homeowner, who's at 58 Iron Hill, uh, Hill Road of Brookfield.
Iron Works, Iron Works.
Iron Works, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Iron Works Hill Road. Uh, so essentially, uh, he's looking to put a 10 by 20, uh, shed in the property, uh, it is on the southwest corner of the property where he's looking, so looking to get a variance from 30, uh, foot setback to 10 feet, so a 20-foot, uh, difference. The hardship is the, the property, the, the non-conformist property in the R40 zone, it's a 40,000 square fo- uh, zone, which the property is only about 30,000 square feet. Um, that, uh, you know, obviously, uh, there's not sufficient space with, with the, on the rear, uh, portion of the property with the trees that are in place, with the existing septic, uh, I don't know, I provided some drawings. Uh, the septic, you know, was designed based on what was on the, uh, the town record, I don't know if it's exact based on what the homeowner showed to me, he thinks the fields are actually extended further out than what's showing on the drawings. He thinks the fields are actually extended further out than what's showing on the drawings. And for that reason, you know, he asked me if we could go for a variance to put the shed on the further out away from the center of the property.
Thank you. Mr. Souza, there's two variances, not one requesting twenty feet, so one is to the rear lot line. I just want to verify it with you. Required dimension is thirty-one, thirty-one feet, proposed dimension is ten. So, you're looking for a twenty-foot variance to the rear lot line. And then the second variance would be structured to the right sideline, that's thirty feet, proposed dimension is ten. So, you're looking for twenty feet there. So, that's two variances, sir?
Uh, you could say yes, so it would be the rear side, rear lot and the side lot, correct, variance.
I just wanted to verify. Please continue.
That's correct. I mean, that's, that's essentially it.
Thank you.
Are the neighbors aware? Are there neighbors in both sides here?
Yes, so the neighbors, uh, there's actually a few, well, you can look at the Google Maps, but adjacent to the west, there's a property which already has a shed literally on the property line as well.
You know which one you're talking about, I saw.
Exactly. So, you would be essentially almost, I mean, uh, the homeowner told me to do a ten-foot. He thinks he's actually depending where, uh, is that where he thinks that the leach fields are, he may actually move even closer to the home or to the center of the property. Uh, but there is a, you know, just to the west of it where this, where we're proposing the ten-by-twenty shed, there's another shed over there on the, on the other owner's property. Now, the other properties are where? I mean, the latter was sent out. I don't know if anyone had reached out.
Any other questions? I'll be super fast.
I just had a question about what's the issue with having a shed to the left of the house? What is in the space over here?
That is the, that's essentially the front property, so that's...
That's the driveway.
So, this is the...
Yeah, Iron Works.
Iron Works.
This is Iron Works right out here.
Runs on the east side of the property.
Correct. Yeah, there's the driveway.
And there's a well there too as well. I don't know exactly where it is, but it's a well there.
Anybody else have any questions? We just got a quickie one. All right, so, please, please thank the homeowner for allowing me to go out there. But just real quick question. So, where you want to put the shed, and here's the map that I drew it on, is right here, basically, back in the, yeah, is that the north side? No, this is the back west, back western side, yeah. So, the back west, west slash south, southwest side of the property, basically putting it there. And right opposite the property line, that's the shed that you were talking about that the neighbors got there already. I drew it in, it's right here. This shed's approximately fifteen feet by eighteen feet.
Okay.
Is that the one you were talking about earlier?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that's what, so they'd almost be kind of like a back-to-back looking shed. My other question was, when I walked out there, I had a little bit of a language barrier. He had his daughter there, she was very, very nice. Couldn't ask really any questions there, but I was able to figure this out. Why not bump it forward a little bit, okay, just, and I think you have the possibility to not need the variances at all. I understand you gotta have a, see, there's a ten-foot buffer from the septic, here's the field, here's the galley. But bump it forward a little bit, you could probably go about ten feet forward each way and put it, move it slightly be north and, yeah, north and east of where it is right now. So, come a little bit forward towards the Iron Works Hill roadside and a little bit farther north. What's the problem or thought behind not being able to do that?
Again, I mean, that's a possibility, exactly, and the homeowner expressed the, expressed that option of moving it closer.
Instead of a twenty-foot, and a twenty-foot variance, maybe a ten and a ten?
Correct, ten and a ten, and he's totally fine with that. What he's afraid of is that the galleys, they, as drawn here, it was based on, on the drawing, on the building records, building arm records. However, he feels that the leaching fields or the galleys are much...
Might go out farther than what it actually shows on the map.
Because essentially, what it, what it's shown, I have video. And you, you can actually see it in the wintertime where the snow is, but... This is walls on the record, and it's not very clear where the, where it's located.
And he wants to, he's gonna be putting it back right, right over here, right?
Exactly, so he'd be putting it over here, but he feels that this is not really properly drawn and it's actually out here.
Perfect. Or even if it wasn't and he had that on to it, he'd need that probably.
Exactly.
We call it a V one-hundred. It's basically a reserve for your septic.
Exactly, and he would need also the ten-foot buffer, right?
Thank you, sir.
I have one more quick question. So, if this is the front, you're requesting a right-side setback, but this is the left side.
Where's he requesting two?
Well, he's requesting a back and a right, but this is the back right.
Of course, the flip end, right, so it's...
I'm saying right, right side, it should be a left-side setback, right?
No, it's on the right side. If you hold the map like this, Iron Works goes here.
No, Iron Works is, Iron Works is here.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, Iron Works is on its side, so it would be, so it's, it's the, the left, it is, it's the runway, it's the rear.
And so, we're staring at it, here's his driveway that's right on Iron Works Hill Road, so Iron Works is here. Yeah, you're right, Carl, it's left.
It would be a left.
We would have to stipulate that.
Yeah, we'd need to correct that.
Right, so it would be the left, left and rear.
Well, that's, that's why I originally thought it was faced this way, because I'm gonna go over it side, but, yeah.
Yeah, so this right side should really be the left side. Thank you.
That's why I was originally looking at it like this and thinking, oh, it can go here because I'm back right.
Thank you very much. Anybody? Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, and do we have anything in correspondence?
No.
Nothing on, okay. At this time, I would like to ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Sir, you have the closing remarks.
I'm all set, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for the short closing remarks. Thank you very much. Okay, um, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing for Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-three, Fifty-Eight Iron Works Hill Road.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I would like to entertain a motion to continue all deliberations tonight until a second meeting. At some point, we can discuss a time for a special meeting. But I think in order to have act like effective intellectual and articulate discussion, we can't begin deliberations on these matters at eleven fifteen at night. And a couple of the deliberations would be better if we could have one of the town attorneys present to ask questions to any of the first two applications, I believe, we had legal questions for.
I agree. How does everybody else feel? Everybody, how does everybody feel?
I think that's a wonderful motion. Should I name the motions?
Do we have to do all deliberations at the same time?
I think we gotta go all at the same time, and I have...
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes.
Do we have to go in the same order that we've heard the public hearings? Can we deliberate?
If we were gonna do it, I would, but...
Can we deliberate the, the ones that are here?
Right.
Sir, you want to, so what you're saying is let's deliberate some of them now?
The more complex ones we can, we can continue.
Right.
I'm great with that. If we take like a two-and-a-half-minute break, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'll keep going, and we'll, we'll deliberate a few of them.
Well, it's just you five.
Well, yeah, let's deliberate.
It's just you five. The three alternates, I don't have to deliberate once it's closed, we're going home.
Sure you don't want to stay?
That's like, I like that.
All right, can I take, I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion. I'd like to take, take an entertaining motion for a five-minute recess.
No, no.
No, just go?
No. Please, we have three people here, Mr. Chairman.
No, right after that, we're gonna come back and we're gonna deliberate probably three of these.
No, I don't want to come back.
You don't want to come back?
Yeah, I want a bio-break.
I want to have these people.
You gotta go, you gotta go.
Okay, I didn't even think of that.
You're doing a whole...
Just been drinking water for the past...
Yeah, go now.
No, then we'll come back and we'll deliberate some, or, I mean...
Not some of them.
Motion for five-minute recess.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yes, yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go.
We're on a break until, uh, eleven...
Let's just call it twenty-four.
Let's call it twenty-five.
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 Eleven twenty-five, we'll be right back.
Take your jacket off. Just warm it up.
You keep going over that cord, right? I can close, that thing died at like an hour and a half ago. It did.
I need to stand up, I like the phone.
I can't believe...
I had a cup of coffee before I came, and started to think that you were on session.
I knew it was gonna be late, but I'm like, hey, my, hello, you will be. And I have a morning, I have eight, eight AM start tomorrow. With the best. It's why I'm retired. It's why I retire. I think that I have to do this and do that because I, I would, I would be getting a bit, I even be trying to Stanford. I would be...
Being in, being in alternative advantages...
Sorry, yeah. I do not believe you.
Yeah.
Do you say your hours? I do, but my hours are recovered and I need to study. It's the way it is, right? You gotta get everything done before you have to get that over the case. Well, two of them are in my name. Two of them in color. You don't look like you're, you're... The youngest one? So, you had a little bit of a situation, man? So, you must have went after work, isn't it? Yeah, I did. Oh, did you?
Oh, yeah.
She started her own business.
Amazing.
We are.
I remember said that, I mean, mothers who...
And he wins every time.
Work full-time, out of the house, and then come home into the house. It's amazing. Oh, Charlie Lee said, I thought you would have said, let's go.
No, I know he had...
Oh, that, I didn't think of that, that's what I thought.
I always want to get in this fight than the only Marine in the land and then the other guy.
Yeah, they were taught in SMAT or something.
And you know what? I think someone threw it back to us. And I'm not saying it's here, say it's not. Okay, somebody said, so I'm not just saying that.
Chamberlain, very very stern.
It's for Alan, but they're probably also... It's not like it's adverse possession. And if you take that from...
Mr. Molly, is there a way of clothes shutting down in the face or do we want to do that?
I think, I think we...
I don't know, I don't even...
Number two, not a five, no, a six, no problem.
It's cold in here, I know.
My feet are like ice. Thank you. Yeah, and I think because we're wearing sandals, right?
Oh, no, I have...
I give you my shirt.
I just always take, so...
It was hot, everybody was in here.
Everybody ready to reconvene?
It was hot before.
Ready.
Ready to reconvene?
Yes.
Okay. We're reconvening the meeting, uh, Monday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-three, at eleven twenty-three PM.
Is it record for you guys?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I think...
I'd like to make a motion to continue, uh...
Two oh-two Canada Lake Road.
Yeah, two oh-two Canada Lake Road, Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-seven deliberations to the next meeting because that will be a long one, and I think we should all be wide awake for it.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-seven, two oh-two Canada Lake Road to the next scheduled meeting, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. About twenty station.
Whoa, should we just go in order?
Yeah, you want to go in order? Okay, yeah, sure. Um, next on the agenda is, I'd like to take a motion, we're gonna go into, these are called closed deliberations, but they're open to the public view. Um, so we just talk on this exercise. All right, I'd like to take a motion to, uh, let's see, open deliberations on Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, thirty-three A, Carmen Hill Road. Uh, I'd like to take a motion to approve the application as submitted. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. This is thirty-three A, Carmen Hill Road. Let me bring it up, that's number two. Let me find it. I got it.
Is that...
Justin Giuliano Residence.
The big issue I have with this one is our authority on the matter. I think, I like, I think from a personal perspective, I agree with the application. I just question if it's the job of the ZBA to approve personal hardships that don't have to do with the property itself, but rather the people residing in it. That's, that's the conundrum and difficulty I'm having. That it, it seems like it's more disabilities matter, and I'm not sure if that's the ZBA's position to rule on as much of it as it is maybe a judge or some other, some other legal body that's more well-versed in, I personally am not well-versed in the America, Americans with Disabilities Act, so I don't know if I can say that someone with those difficulties needs the extra four hundred square feet.
That was, that was my question.
Personal logic, but...
The only personal logic I have was my mom, who was disabled towards a lot of years of her life, and she had a teeny-tiny little place, but she got by. But I'd like to hear everybody else's opinion on that.
Well, I, I took care of my mother too, but she lived with me. I don't have a lot of compassion, but that's not what we're here for.
Needs a hardship.
It does. Sir, I just think it needs someone to look over it that has the right qualifications to look at what people with disabilities and handicaps need.
But, but that's with regard to just one of the variances that's requested.
The biggest one.
Right, but I, the space that they're requesting, the, the size is relevant. I don't know if giving them a twenty-foot variance, yes or no, matters if it fits with the size that they need.
Let's, let's take their time and look at it.
If the applicant even want to go in a, even this area.
Did you ask that?
So, when you come, when you come up his driveway, okay, this is all driveway here. Basically, and he had a little, there was a little piece of driveway there that there was a snowplow in, uh, a beautiful white oak tree, about ninety feet tall. It's a monster tree, but it is a beautiful tree. And it's basically between where the driveway is and where he wants to put the barns slash living quarters, the apartment and stuff. I thought that there was a possibility to move it a little bit farther north on the property. I understand where he was coming from, but hey, you're just gonna have to put a driveway going over there which takes off of some of the front yard, but still needs to have a hardship to justify it in the first place, so... And I kind of agree with Carl, and that's, I wanted to hear what everybody else said.
Well, the twenty-foot variance to me seems like more of a convenience to have a front yard immediately in front of your house instead of this, the empty space being in front of your accessory apartment.
Yeah, the house is there.
Like, he, he didn't say there was a reason he can't move it closer.
We're, we're in closed deliberations, I'm sorry, sir.
Because there was a well there too, that would be...
We're in closed deliberations, sir, I'm sorry.
And I, I guess to the question you asked earlier, he, he didn't say that, well, he did say that he would need the twelve hundred square feet. He didn't say he refused to build it if we didn't give it to him, but he said he couldn't compromise on it because Alan asked him if he could, instead of two thousand.
I tried a couple of different ways to split the difference between eight and twelve at a thousand.
No, that, right, so he said, no, that wouldn't work, so I don't see a reason to grant the twenty feet. I won't grant the twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, I can't, I still can't figure out why a thousand square feet wouldn't work, but it wouldn't work.
It wouldn't work, wouldn't work. I think that's, again, some, the job for... I think that's, again, some, the job for a judge or a board that is well-versed on disability law and not zoning.
I understand. Do you, do you have any thoughts, Simon?
I feel the same way. I am having a hard time establishing the hardship in our purview as a zoning protocol is.
You want to answer me?
What would, where would he go? Where, what could we do? I mean, could we stipulate to come back? That's what I was.
I think, I'd like to ask Fran a question. Would it be okay if I asked you a quick question, Fran?
Sure.
All right.
Staff.
Does he have the ability, if he could, to go in front of zoning and ask for, through this case, and like was here, and ask for maybe a special permit to allow that to happen there or allow it to be on there?
For the size?
Well, that's really what it is. It's a size thing there, yeah.
Zoning is still, isn't that still an issue with the land?
They're just gonna automatically say no.
The ZBA in the pass has done, I think there was two of them at the ZBA. The pass commission has approved for larger sizes.
I got you. So it's, it's really for us to handle.
It is. Do you have, would you happen to know why they approved larger sizes? Uh, not my own cases.
Because they were more permissive?
Yeah, I guess. There, there was another difference.
We were very permissive.
I was, I was just curious if there was a specific stipulation.
Yes, yes.
I do understand the need for, you know, more space because with wheelchairs and lifts and, you know, as, as aging goes and if you're disabled, you do need more space, more access. So I do, from my professional experience, understand that.
It's not like you can't have it. You can have one that's eight hundred square feet. Maybe you would have to come right, for this location on it.
Yeah, the tight quarters prevent use of, you know.
Can I ask Fran a question?
Yes.
Is there anything that we could do to kind of stay the case and ask the applicant to revisit and see?
I think we'd have to.
Yeah, cause the public hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed on it. So he would have to wait six months to come back.
But you can deny it without prejudice.
Can we do that?
No problem with that. You have a problem with that?
And then he can resubmit.
I don't know, does anybody have?
What, what state?
Instead of a, if we did happen to deny it, they would have to have something substantially different and wait six months, but we could deny it without prejudice. And then he could resubmit something for maybe next meeting or something. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes, give some chance to come back.
I'd like to take a motion, oh wait, actually. We gotta hope, right? How do we do it? How exactly do you make that motion? I'm getting tired, it's late. Do I make a motion to disapprove without prejudice? I'm not sure.
Well, ask me.
Okay. I'll try to wear this as best as I can. I'm gonna have to ask.
Then do you have to differentiate it from declining to. Yeah.
If I did that, could I just state it at the end? Or we could just state and agree upon it? All right, we'll make it a stipulate.
That's what the vote's on.
Yeah, all right. Okay, all discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, everybody's ready to vote, right? All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-four, say aye. All those against, say nay.
Nay.
Without prejudice. Nay without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes.
That's five nays without prejudice. Does that work, Fran?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Rashad has slapped us all.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Have a good evening.
Can I ask what that means?
You wanna explain to him, Fran?
Yeah, I'll talk to you, Justin, out in the hallway. All right.
All right. That is, yeah, that's number two, right? Let me check, mark next to it. You wanna, you wanna skip to number five?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the deliberations on.
Z dash twenty-three dash.
Yeah, Z dash twenty-three dash thirty and Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-one.
You have to do them separately or we can group them?
I don't know.
Let's group them.
That's what I'm doing.
That sounds good to me.
For, yeah.
So I have a motion, I have a motion on the table to.
Continue deliberations on Z dash twenty-three dash thirty and Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-one until the next, next available.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So this is continuing. This is continuing. All right, I'll take a motion, moving on to fifty-eight Indian Trail Road. I'll take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-two, fifty-eight Indian Trail Road as submitted.
So.
Do I have a second? Is there a discussion? This is number five.
No.
Let me go back.
The topography is really.
Yes.
The hardship is evident right there.
Nice house.
Yes.
Yeah, let me find it here. It's number five, right?
This one number four.
Nobody has any discussion?
No.
I think the issues with topography and whatnot are fairly self-indulgent.
Yes, the hardship is evident and.
Is it okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, just give me one second to find number five, it's buried here somewhere. Six. Okay, now I know. I just wanna make sure I have it in front of me correctly. Fifty-eight Indian Trail.
They've been posted there, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's the couple. So everybody's okay with it the way it is. Obviously, topography, the severe slope of the property is an issue. The parking up front and safety is an issue. What else? I just thought that it could be a little bit smaller to bring in a little bit more performance. I just thought the amount of the request, you know, seventy percent on the front lot line and six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one twenty square feet on the lot area size, basically a fifty percent reduction, I just thought it was a little high.
I just don't know where you find the room to squeeze that, I think.
No, you, you compact it. You just don't make it so big.
The garage is a two-car garage, you know, you have to have two cars that can get inside you. I don't think there's much scope to.
Right, you can, you can squeeze down a house a little, but a garage kind of has a very standard size to it. You gotta fit your car in.
No one has a compact car anymore.
Yeah.
Okay, so topography and safety, that's your thinking.
Yep. How do you feel?
Aye.
Everybody comfortable with voting?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash three, Laura Sealy residence, say, oh, as, as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all very much. Thank you for all the time. This is a honor for everybody.
I appreciate you staying.
No, it's, it's a lot on your shoulders tonight.
Please thank Miss Sealy for allowing me to walk her property. I appreciate that, sir.
Well, thank you for not falling in the backyard.
I'm glad I didn't fall. Okay.
And the last.
All right, yeah, I'd like to take a motion to approve, and this is fifty-eight Ironwood Hill Road, Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-three, Rue De Souza, I don't know where that's, Mr. De Souza was here. I don't know, I need to get the last name right. Now, I wanna, I wanna get a break this time.
Sekura.
Thank you. Sekura residence, as submitted, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
We need to amend the application to be a.
Yeah, if we do approve it, you gotta change that to left, right? To make it accurate.
That is my only discussion on there.
Only find number six.
And they probably don't need the whole twenty.
I think, yeah, I think you can reduce both ways to ten and ten rather than. That's what I think. I think it can be cut in half.
That was the one you had on your drawing, shifting it.
As soon as I find out who here it is. Yeah, I think.
But just, aren't they saying that the leasing fields are.
Well, he's saying he thinks there's a possibility that the leasing, so, so the septic fields are way up here. Well, here's the tank, okay, then they're gonna have a D box, that's what they put in there. And then it goes out to a field, a field, a field. You still have, see, there's a ten-foot buffer right there, that's to supposedly the last field. If you took this, there's probably another ten feet going over to where I suggested, maybe we can move it. So they still got another ten after that.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, so I don't know, I, I think, I think it can be shortened to ten and ten. And then obviously you gotta change it to the left.
Right.
Left?
Do they have to send their application, correct the application?
Make a stipulation on it now if we wanted to, couldn't we, Fran? Just to change it to the left? So do you wanna, you wanna make the stipulation?
To, I'll make the motion to amend the application for approval to be uh, ten, uh, ten feet variance from the left sideline and a ten feet variance from the rear lot line.
Right, and we're removing anything that said right side. Okay, do I have a second?
A second then, but should we say twenty feet or should we say ten?
Ten.
Ten foot.
We're approving ten feet, but, oh, okay, so.
Yeah, well, we're making a stipulation, we're changing it from twenty and twenty to ten and ten.
So, for a second.
All right.
Yeah.
All those in favor of approving Z dash, now, let's discuss the hardships and everything. Obviously, septic. The septic system, septic in the well.
Septic well.
Yeah, I would say it's, you, you can't put it in front of the house.
Yep.
You, you can't go really north.
And there's a playground already there.
Yeah, there's a playground already there. You get the septic, let's say, septic and well.
Okay.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-three with the stipulations as amended, which would be structured to rear lot line ten feet and structured to left lot line ten feet, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you for staying with us.
Um, let me buzz through and we'll. Can you just give off the rest of stuff, I don't know.
Yes.
All right. Uh, table items, there's none?
No, no, we'll save that.
Uh, number eight, informal discussion, update for, ah, let's go over that next time.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we table or assist, or you want me to buzz through this? I, I know the answer for this. I can give it in ten seconds.
I think we can table everything else.
Yeah, all right, so let's table A, let's table B, continue until next meeting. And would you like to make your favorite motion, sir?
Well, I wanted to ask if we think we should have a special meeting for the purposes of the remaining deliberations or if we're not continuing the deliberations until July. The concern that I have being what?
Yeah, is, well, it's the time. We have that sixty-five day rule, correct, Fran?
For what?
Well, we have, we have to do deliberations on two cases, right?
Three.
Twenty station.
Yeah.
Uh, three, seven thirty-one Federal Road, yeah, we gotta do three deliberations.
Say a separate meeting.
That, and we don't know if we're gonna have six more cases.
Saturday morning.
No.
Oh, no.
Is there any?
Another Monday, next Monday.
You wanna do a next Monday?
Yeah.
What date is that?
The twelfth, I think.
Is it the twelfth?
You have to see what, what rooms are available to meet and stuff, and it has to be advertised, so we gotta.
Yeah, and you gotta do it, the advertisement, how many days in advance?
Is it twenty-four hours for a special?
I think it's forty-eight.
This is just deliberations, right?
It's just us.
Yeah, but the public's allowed, we gotta, we have to still notify them.
Yeah.
Yeah. We still have to notify people.
So a week is still enough time, though, for.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
On Monday, I, I.
Yeah, Wetlands is next Monday, so we gotta figure out.
I have to see.
You are a morning secretary, she does Wetlands.
Wetlands always goes over there, right? Maybe Amy could fill in as secretary that night, get another special exemption from upstairs.
Yeah, no thanks.
It's gonna be short, though.
No, it's not.
You.
It's gonna be a fight.
I only have one que, I only have a quick one.
Yes, ma'am.
No, right.
Exactly.
So does, do one day, the twelfth work for everyone?
I don't know, I, I don't know because I have to see what my other.
But all.
I'm pretty sure it's fine with me.
The other alternates were stayed throughout the whole thing, so they could, they're fit to sit on it, right?